All right, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this January 31st meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. I would like to invite those of you who are willing and able to please stand for the invocation, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank you for allowing us to assemble to conduct the business before us today. May we pause to give thanks and celebrate the retirement of our friend, Mr. Lou Shelley. We recognize Mr. Shelley for his leadership and wise counsel over the past 25 years. We are grateful for his dedication and outstanding service provided to our community. We praise for a special blessing on his life. God, we also want to give thanks and recognition to our employees who were instrumental in helping restore electric service to our neighbors in the U.S. Virgin Islands. Thank you for your protection and granting them strength as they completed that arduous task. Bless the employees and their families for the sacrifices they made throughout the holiday season. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir. Item 9.04 has been pulled for discussion and has been renumbered as item 10.01.
All right, we have a few proclamations this evening. I want to begin by inviting forward Grant Gephardt with the Big Ben Sierra Club, Steve Earth with Sustainable Tallahassee, and Linda Lee with the Legal Women Voters of Tallahassee. If you're here, please join me at the podium. Maybe? Oh, there you go. Yes, please. How y'all doing? Just stand up and we'll face outward. All right, and the proclamation today reads, "Whereas there is a growing interest from homeowners in Tallahassee and in Leon County at installing solar panels in their homes to reduce their energy bills, generate pollution-free renewable energy, and to be resilient to storms. And whereas elsewhere in Florida and in other parts of the country, neighborhood solar purchasing co-ops have been created through entities such as Solar United Neighbors of Florida. And whereas solar purchasing co-ops are voluntary groups that use solar, use their combined purchasing power to ensure they receive the most competitive solar installations. And whereas solar purchasing co-ops may also offer technical expertise, individual assistance to property owners who are interested in solar power. And whereas Solar United Neighbors of Florida has established solar co-ops in Broward County, the Space Coast Region, Hillsborough County, North Pinellas County, Sarasota County, Orange County, St. Petersburg, and several -- Tallahassee isn't listed, but this is why we're here -- and several other counties across Florida. And whereas Solar United Neighborhoods of Florida has partnered with the Big Ben Sierra Club, the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, Florida Conservation Voters Education Fund, Rethink Energy, Sustainable Tallahassee to assist in promoting Leon County Solar Co-op. And whereas Solar United Neighbors of Florida has developed a solar co-op set to launch in January of 2018 here in Tallahassee, Leon County, today. And property owners in Tallahassee, Leon County, who are interested in solar power may benefit from being able to choose it as part of the solar co-op. And whereas Solar United Neighbors of Florida has represented that its solar purchasing co-ops around the country include moderate-income neighborhoods, very important. And whereas this city wishes to support the creation of solar co-ops in concept and to provide venues and other in-kind support for informational meetings and solar co-ops for interested property owners in Tallahassee and in Leon County. Now therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, along with the Tallahassee City Commission, do hereby express our support for this concept, solar co-ops, and encourage Solar United Neighbors of Florida to work with the City Commission office and our city staff to collaborate in hosting informational sessions. And I'd like to invite forward one of you to bring a few remarks and bring the community up to speed about this innovative approach. Will you please welcome one of our representatives of solar co-ops?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Grant Gelhart. I'm the Chair of the Big Ben Sierra Club. And also with me here, we have representatives from the League of Women Voters, Tallahassee, Sustainable Tallahassee, and also Rethink Florida, Rethink Energy Florida. We are really happy, I've been working on this for over a year, to get a solar co-op here in Tallahassee, and we finally got one going here. I think the solar co-ops will facilitate residential and businesses through the process of getting solar panels on their buildings and houses. And this will allow residents to go with renewable energy sources and not using oil and gas power, I think is very important. Putting solar panels on your house is just one little step that everybody can take to combat global warming. This is a small step, but an important step for the community. We hope to see more people and businesses putting solar panels on their houses there by reducing their carbon footprint. I believe the residents of Leon County believe that Florida should be number one in generating solar power. And of course, rooftop solar allows you to put your money in your pocket, and just as the sun rises every day, solar power is a renewable energy of the future. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. I would now like to invite forward the Electric Utility and Fleet Management who are here in attendance, Richard Ash, the COT Electric, and Jeff Shepherd, the Fleet Management. Will you all come? I think that includes all of y'all who are in uniform. Y'all, let's get up and join us up here. Will y'all give them a round of applause as our Electric Utility Fleet Management join us? This is a really impressive bunch, and you'll get to hear why in a moment. The devastating 2017 hurricane season created significant damage in the U.S. Virgin Islands, leaving most of the electric utility system damaged and thousands of our fellow Americans without electric power. When the call for mutual aid went out, the City of Tallahassee and its employees stepped up to assist the U.S. Virgin Islands and their neighbors, Water and Power Authority. These dedicated professionals that you see standing here before you left their homes here in Tallahassee for weeks after getting us back up and running here in the City of Tallahassee following our storm impacts to rebuild the electric utility system in St. Croix. While there, they worked 14-hour days, seven days a week, on the restoration effort. I know that the people of St. Croix, who these brave gentlemen went to assist are forever grateful. I know that's how we felt when you all helped to restore this community, and I know that's how we felt when we had additional crews come to make sure that we got back up and running. I also want to extend my heartfelt thanks to you all's families. You all know, you experienced, and we all know that much of the restoration effort took place during the holiday season. Many of these folks left their families and were away during the height of the holiday season, missing Christmas, New Year's for some, and other important family events. The work that you all do is vital, and the sacrifices that you make to support many families, often at the sacrifice of your own families, is deeply appreciated. I'd be remiss if we also didn't acknowledge the crews that carried the load here. While many of our folks were away, we had to keep our system up and going, and we want to thank those who helped to increase staffing levels and to be on the ready as needed. I'd like to recognize Amy Zubaly, the Executive Director of the Florida Municipal Electrics Association. Thank you for your team, for your tireless efforts in helping to coordinate all of these utility efforts. I want to thank Rob McGarrett, who I believe is sick today, who is the General Manager of the City of Tallahassee's Electric Utility System. And now I'd like to invite forward the leadership of this electric utility system in the absence of Mr. McGarrett, Richard Ash from the COT Electric, and Jeff Shepherd with Fleet Management to bring forth a few words. While they come, will you please once again acknowledge these gentlemen for the great work that they've done?
Mayor, Commissioner, on behalf of the Electrical Utility crews, we want to thank you for the support you gave us during our deployment to the Virgin Islands. I know the population down there showed their appreciation. They were really happy to get the power back on, and it really made us happy to be able to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, y'all are invited to stay for the rest of the meeting. I assume you will be blowing through the doors? He said, "Not on your life." I don't know if he's indoors or if he's out still greeting. Oh, right behind me, I'm sorry. I thought you might be still greeting guests. Mr. Louis Edwin Shelley, will you please join me here at the podium? And Linda? Actually, the Shelley family. This is a bit of a bittersweet day for many of us here at the City of Tallahassee as we are bidding a farewell to a gentleman who's become a staple for this city and for this City Commission, and the citizens of the City of Tallahassee have been able to benefit from his rich contributions. I'd like to read a proclamation on behalf of the City Commission and the citizens of Tallahassee. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas in 1977, Louis Edwin Shelley, known to all of us here as Lou, was admitted to the Florida Bar, the United States District Court for the Northern District of Florida, and the United States Court of Appeals for the 11th Circuit. And whereas in 1977, Mr. Shelley began his legal career representing public employees throughout Florida, which led to his appointment to the Public Employees Relations Commission from 1983 to 1987 by Governor Bob Graham. And whereas in 1987, Mr. Shelley returned to private practice representing city and county governments throughout Florida, including the City of Tallahassee. And whereas on October 1, 1992, Mr. Shelley joined the City of Tallahassee's first in-house office of the city attorney, serving as a deputy city attorney for 20 years. And whereas on December 29, 2012, with the support of a unanimous City Commission, Mr. Shelley began his tenure as the city attorney for the City of Tallahassee. And whereas during his career as deputy city attorney, the city attorney, Mr. Shelley, served with the City of Tallahassee and its citizens unselfishly, as he humbly served as a public servant while providing compassionate, fair, and intelligent leadership in good times and in bad, consistently maintaining the highest ethical standards, providing sound judgment and legal counsel, and leading the city attorney's office and its employees for 25 years while demonstrating the ability to have fun, and don't we know that, and sometimes use his unconventional, I didn't write that word, the lubid is so appropriate, unconventional methods to inspire employees and providing outstanding professional legal services to our organization and its citizens, always in keeping with the needs and welfare and best interests of the City Commission, the City of Tallahassee, and its citizens. Whereas when Mr. Shelley was not serving the City of Tallahassee, he demonstrated a deep commitment, an unselfish love to the underserved, impoverished, children, families, and his church, where he far exceeded 1,000 hours of pro bono service throughout this community." Incredible. And whereas, and whereas on January 31, 2018, after 25 loyal, dedicated legal years representing the public interests of the City of Tallahassee and its citizens, Mr. Shelley will retire as city attorney effective, I guess at the end of this meeting. We're gonna stay here long tonight, make you earn your keep. Now therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of this city, do hereby recognize Louis Edwin Shelley for being a steadfast, dedicated city attorney, for his distinguished service to the City of Tallahassee and its citizens, and for his part in making Tallahassee an exciting, interesting, dynamic place to live, work, and call home. And I encourage the citizens of Tallahassee to join the entire City Commission, myself, and the leadership of this community in commending Louis Edwin Shelley for his dedicated, loyal leadership here in the City of Tallahassee. Will you join me in recognizing this amazing public servant?
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. First, let me say how much I appreciate your support, not only in the last five years, but in the preceding 20 years, as we set up a in-house city attorney's office and sought to be the best in-house local government office in the state and even looked to the nation. And I have an incredible group of employees, nine other lawyers, and about equal number support staff that have been as dedicated or more than I have been over the last 25 years to providing good, solid legal advice to this commission, to the managers and executives within the city, always looking to what we would hope to be able to determine to be the city as a whole's best interest. So, I'd like to take just one second, if all the members of the city attorney's office who are there who owe so much, and this government owes so much too, if you could just stand real quickly in place, please, everyone from the city attorney's office. Having a solid professional office just doesn't happen all of a sudden, and I had the great fortune of working with and being the deputy of Jim English, the longest-serving city attorney, and him being my mentor for many years. So, I am so pleased that Jim is here today, and much of the credit for the office and our successes go to Jim over the years. Thank you, Jim. I am proud of this government. I am proud of the work that we're doing, particularly to those who do not have the economic and political power of most of us that are in this office today. We're doing more and more for the homeless, for those who have basic needs, as I think we should. And I also want to thank, again, my office, we have been 100% contributing to United Way over the past 25 years. We have conducted countless drives for everything from animal food for the animal shelter to book drives for kids coming back to school. I have a group of people that I work with who have great hearts. And finally, let me just say, none of this would have been possible without a support team. I am so thankful and pleased to have had my wife, Linda, and my mother-in-law, Marilyn, and my son, Adam Shelley, all being strong supporters in my camp for 25-plus years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. All right, Commissioners, we are now at the point in the meeting where we will take public input on agenda items. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we have a number of speakers. As we get started, I'll ask each speaker, when you come to the microphone to my right, your left, please give us your name and address for the record. As the Mayor indicated, this part of the meeting is for agenda items which are not public hearing items. We will have comment on public hearings, but we'll take those individually at each item later in this meeting. I will also remind speakers that you have three minutes for your remarks. We do have more speakers than would fill our 30-minute allotted time if each of you takes all three minutes, so I would just encourage you to make your remarks, let us know what you have to say, but also if someone else has already said exactly what you want to say, you could maybe shorten your remarks and leave a couple of moments for others to speak as well. With that, our first speaker for whom I have a form is Peter Butzine, but I believe on the public hearing on 1507, which is the Ethics Code, so that'll be later in the meeting. So, the first speaker at this time will be Russell Mick, and then that will be followed by Stanley Sims. So, if you'll come to this microphone to my right on the far side there, and again, just give us your name and address, and you can begin. There is a light just to the left, there's a light just to the left of the microphone that'll be green and then turn red, but I'll also let you know when three minutes are here.
Mic check, one, two, one, two. Thank you. My name is Russell Mick, and I live at 1999 Saralee Lane, which is adjacent to Spencer Road. I just wanted to speak, raise your hand over there, all of us that are here together tonight. We're a very small neighborhood, but we wanted to voice ourselves and let you know that we're against the proposed substation expansion. We feel like it's going to massively alter the landscape to detriment of our nearby homes. I and we were informed that there were alternate locations with which the substation expansion could work. We would like for this to be investigated. We also requested this process be slowed down, that we could have clear transparency, and for the substation to impact any sort of homes in the least possible way. We'd like to continue to work together with you. We hope that you agree that that's always going to be best for our community, and I just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims. He will be followed by Landon Zimmer. Mr. Sims also on item 1001.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm thinking that I may have 1001, that is not. That's not the right one, sir, for me.
Tell them. I think so, but that's fine. You can identify your item, and then you'll have your three minutes.
Oh, okay. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I'm here tonight because I just don't believe that this system in replacing our city manager and our assistant and our city attorney is fair. Commissioner Scott Maddox, I was at the retreat, and I heard your remarks, and I think that your remarks, when you talked about longevity and remaining a person to be on board, is more applicable to Ms. Jackson than it is to Mr. Reese. Here's the problem that I have. Ms. Jackson, there's a position description, Commissioner Miller, on the website talking about what we are looking for. It does not say, "Hang around lawyers who have passed the bar exam." It says, "Pass the bar exam." Ms. Jackson has passed the bar exam. Ms. Jackson has not only passed the bar exam, but she has more education academics than the city manager who y'all want to put into place. Here's another problem that we have. Ms. Jackson has served this city without any kind of slander or scam. She was at HR, she was interim HR director. No pictures of her in Tallahassee Democrat with the football game. None with her. I don't have the three minutes, so I gotta move to the other side. Reese Gow does not have a master's degree, has changed the public, the position description to fit him. He came to the commission, you remember when we talked about sweet potatoes and white potatoes? He told you that giving him and his other 15 employees $50,000 raises each would not result in layoffs. He lied. Not only did it result in layoffs, it resulted in what approximately 38 class action suits. People are suing. There's, and then here's another thing. He's got pictures of him at the football game, but here's what I don't understand. We're getting ready to fill two top positions. The Tallahassee Democrat will not put up what we're looking for. How can we, yesterday, Commissioner Miller, I did a public records request because I wanted to know what was the job description for the city manager. I can't get that. So, if I can't get it, how can we, anybody who wants the city manager's job, they gotta do a public records request?
Excuse me, that's three minutes.
And I'm closing up. This is my last point. When I went to Reese Gow looking for a job to feed my family, I was, it was a customer service job making $13.50 sitting out. I was tested, I had to go through a whole lot of tests, I had to have academic, when I could not pass the test, they said it was no room on the bus. I say, he told James Barnes it was no room on the bus for me.
Mr. Sims, we're gonna have to...
There's no room on the bus for Reese Gow, he hadn't passed the test.
We're gonna have to make sure that each, thank you, I appreciate your comments. Because the timing is limited for this section, we're gonna have to try and keep everybody strictly to their three minutes. So, I appreciate the grace there, but we're gonna try and stay our three minutes. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Landon Zimmer, speaking on item 1301, Discussion of Proposed Land Exchange and Development Agreements with Zimmer Development Company. He will be followed by Craig Huffman.
Thank you. Good evening, my name's Landon Zimmer. I'm here as a representative and partner of Zimmer Development Company. We're a real estate company based out of Wilmington, North Carolina, and we focus in commercial, real estate, multifamily, as well as student housing. And over the past several years, we've become one of the top 15 most active student housing developers and owners. Craig Huffman will further discuss the details of this plan and the benefits of the city, and also our Director of Development, Adam Tucker's here, as well as Ms. Jerry Lindsay, who's the director of, the acting director of the Stern Street condominiums. And moving ahead, Craig helped design the Gaines Street guidelines and really held our feet to the fire here. He's an architect, urban designer, as well as a professor at Florida A&amp;M University. And myself and everyone I mentioned are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Craig Huffman. Following him, Mr. Huffman, will be Gary Yates. Craig Huffman, 1127 Morningside Court, Tallahassee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So as Landon mentioned, this is the next phase of Stadium Enclave, which we're calling Mosley Place currently for the time being. This is the area of view looking north. Let me go a little more, then we'll back up. This is the overall master plan, and we're just west of Colechoupan and the railroad tracks, and a little bit south of Gaines Street. It's part of the old Sterns-Mosley neighborhood, and it is not too far from Lake Bradford This image shows one key point of this master plan, if you look at that dark red line, that's a proposed connectivity from the north Gaines Street to the south, Fambu Way extension, it extends west. And that's a feature that not only will reestablish Stern Street, the north-south street, as having an urban presence, but that kind of elliptical shape right in the center is going to be a neighborhood square, a city square, which is a public space, it will not be private. It's the heart of the community and will be a new node, that, public node, from moving from north to south. The project is conceived not just as student housing or apartments, but really walkable streets. Of course, as Landon mentioned, it adopts the best planning practices of the Gaines Street District, and in the park, the streets are walkable, there are street trees, there's street parking, and very wide sidewalks, and places to sit, places to be, so it's going to add to the urban characteristics of the Gaines Street District. Little bit of a close-up there, there's that city park that we're talking about. All the buildings really move up to the park, parking's in the rear, so we have a true urban precinct. On the south sector, we've worked with the neighborhoods and the neighbors in the area, and there's three large oak trees, the Stern Street extension as it moves south to Fambu Way, those, you see it kind of meanders and moves to the east so that those oak trees can be preserved. More features, more elements in the park. And just some views of the city park, and views from the balconies of buildings around. It's designed with stepdad principles, eyes on the street, many balconies, many pedestrians, it'll be a safe urban environment. That completes the tour.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Gary Yates, on item 1001, which is the Spencer Road item. He'll be followed by Ben Poitavent, who will be speaking on 1102.
Good afternoon, Gary Yates, 6000 Boynton Homestead, Tallahassee. Mr. Mayor, Commission members, we appreciate the opportunity for you to hear some concerns today from a lot of my neighbors, and you can look at these neighbors and count many, many other neighbors that aren't here that share these same concerns. And I'm speaking to item 101 on the agenda, and I'm glad to join my neighbors in strong opposition to that item, which is the purchase of property at 7052 Spencer Road, which seems to be, by the way, at a price the city wants to buy, at a significant higher price than what that property is probably worth, which is a whole nother issue. But the serious problem with this purchase is that, as you know, it will facilitate the planned expansion, significant expansion of an electronic, an electric substation in that area. There are many folks here from the Spencer Road area, I live on the Oxbo side of the road, with 47 homeowners that are going to be impacted by this as well. My neighbors, who are all, you know, active participants in this community, and voters, and some fine individuals, are very seriously concerned about the safety issues that would be posed with such a significant expansion. The negative impact on our property values in that area certainly would be a big issue, and the potential health concerns. I'm not a scientist, but I know that a significant increase in harmful issues can occur there, which could have a serious impact on health. So the bottom line is, we, as a large group of folks in northeast Tallahassee, strongly encourage this commission to show leadership and to end this ill-advised proposal, project, and direct your staff to find, there's lots of green spaces in Tallahassee, in the area that this is about to be done, about to happen. We would ask you to direct your staff to find a more appropriate location for such an expansion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Ben Poitavent, on item 1102, which concerns the city manager and city attorney positions.
My name is Ben Poitavent. I live at 2341 Limerick Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for this opportunity to offer my thoughts on the selection of a city attorney. With the greatest respect to Lou and the employees in his office, I would like to say it was over 40 years ago that I was sworn into the Florida bar. Since then, I've served as an Assistant State Attorney, Assistant Attorney General, and a Senior Attorney for the Florida Department of State. Prior to becoming an attorney, I was a Special Legend of Florida Department of Law Enforcement, assigned for seven years to Governor Askew. For many of you in the room, you can find his name in the history books. It was Governor Askew who is considered to be the ethical heart for this state, and made many changes in state law regarding ethical issues. He encouraged me to go to law school and was the source of my ethical compass. In my almost 40 years with state government, I've hired attorneys through the state process on at least three occasions. So I hope you will find my comments to be helpful in the city attorney selection process in which you are now engaged. Please conduct a national search. I do not know of any of the current applicants, I do not know any of them, and I will not, therefore, comment on their qualifications. But a search must be for the most qualified attorney, the best lawyer we can find. But that cannot be determined from the limited number of applicants in the search conducted so far. The very fact that only nine applicants came forward is proof of that fact. A position like this should have attracted dozens of applicants. Hire the most qualified, not just the one you know. Go to the efforts to look at the applications yourself, and pick the ones who will best serve the citizens. Be blind to race and gender. Do not allow special interest groups or political connections to influence your selection. The next city attorney must relate to and serve all of the citizens, and not be beholden to any political organization or special interest group. You are looking for an attorney. You are not seeking a job for a friend. Please make the process as untainted by political connections as possible. Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sandra Spencer Miller, speaking on item 1001, followed by Mac McLendon, who also will be on 1001.
Hello, this is Sandra Spencer Miller. As you can tell by my maiden name, I've got long, deep roots in the Oxbottom Road, in the Oxbottom area. I am the third generation to have been landholder in...
Could you pull that microphone down, make it easier for folks to hear? Thank you.
You didn't make it for these little short, squatty people, did you? I'm the, I'm the third generation to have been a landholder in the Oxbottom Road area. All of my growing up time was spent partially in this area, and I'm a second generation to have made this my home, and I raised a fourth generation in that home. This is a neighborhood my father developed, my mother inherited the land, my mother was a Boynton, my father was Clyde Spencer. I'm sure many of you know him. He developed this area, and he had great hopes for it. He wanted it to be a lovely wooded area where people could be proud of their home and enjoy life. He did, he and my mother did, they raised, well, they didn't raise us there, but I have raised my daughter there. It means so much to all of us who live there and have lived there, I've lived there for 46 years. And this is just an egregious taking of the pride of our neighborhood. This will really mess with our property values, mess with our piece of home, and everything like that. I sincerely pray that you will reconsider this, find another source. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mac McLendon, then Lucy Morgan.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. Mac McLendon, 7012 Spencer Road. In 1987, due to tremendous amount of potholes in the road that was private, we contacted the county and asked the county, how can we turn these two roads, Spencer and Saralee, over to the county for maintenance? The engineer came out, spent two hours with us in my home, and after spending those two hours, we began asking questions. How much would it cost to do what you're saying? We need to get the right-of-ways done, we've got to go to the county specifications, the road would have to be built to county specifications. If we got the right-of-ways turned over, how much would it cost us, his homeowners? And the answer was $6,000. And I said, does that mean the neighbor across the street is $3,000 and I'm $3,000? He said, no, 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 each one of you $6,000. $6,000 in 1987. Second que, and of course, we're dumbfounded, the second question was, when could we count on those being paved, those two streets? The answer was five years. I said, five years? A dump truck will be out there and fall in those holes. What do you mean, five years? Sorry, that's the way the schedule is, the planning is that far in advance. We immediately began working on doing a homeowners association. We got it done, we had it chartered, we got the right-of-ways in three months. Federal Highway Safety Inspector was put in charge of getting the bids. We got three bids, we took the middle of the road, the middle one. That road was paved completely by each one of us paying $1,100 in three months. Six months is what it took for our homeowners to take care of those two streets. We have got such a great gathering of people, that now the children of those who lived there originally are now coming back. A year ago, we didn't have but three teenagers in that neighborhood, 35 homes. Today, we've got 23 children, new families, vibrant. They bought there because of the fact tranquility, tranquility I've heard several times. If you pull off of Oxbottom and go through that neighborhood, you will say this is the most undiscovered neighborhood in this county. And we really would like to let everybody know that we've been thinking for two years that this problem was taken care of, when in fact, we just discovered the paperwork that was signed off on next door to us, behind, at Rose Hill. So we're very much opposed. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Lucy Morgan, then Matthew Williams.
My name is Lucy Morgan, Mayor, Commissioners. I expected better of all of you. I didn't expect that you would, with no notice to us, come back into our, and try to destroy the neighborhood that we live in by putting a power station there, which would devalue all of our property and be an eyesore at the end of the street. We really thought you were better neighbors than that. But now you're reaching out of the city, into the county, into our neighborhood, you're punishing the US Attorney who happens to live in our neighborhood. This monstrosity would be next door to him. We have many questions about how this came about, what happened in two years. Two years ago, you voted three to two not to put it in our development, to go look elsewhere, and all of a sudden, out of the dark, you come back after us. Look at Google Earth, at the right-of-way that the city has that runs from Bannerman to McLean. There is a lot of vacant land all along that right-of-way that could serve to, for this substation. I don't understand why you want to destroy a neighborhood and lower the property values there. I've spent most of my life, as many of you know, as a reporter for the St. Petersburg Times, now the Tampa Bay Times. I know enough about reporting and looking at government to know that there's something here that is really wrong, and it shouldn't be happening to a good neighborhood.
Next speaker is Matthew Williams. He's speaking on item 1102. He'll be followed by Mutaki Akbar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. Excuse me, my name is Matthew Williams, I resided in 1963, Gina Lane, and I'm speaking today because I'm, quite honestly, I'm also here on behalf of the Tallahassee Barristers, which is a voluntary bar association here in Tallahassee. On behalf of the barristers and myself, I wanted to say that I'm quite disappointed, troubled, and concerned about the commission's vote to not approve Deputy City Attorney Cassandra Jackson to become the next city attorney. I say I'm disappointed, quite honestly, just because of the actual decision that was made. I'm troubled and concerned because I understand some people's opinion that this should, you know, the national search should be done, and we should have more applicants, but it's troubling when we have a qualified applicant who meets the criteria to be the next city attorney, who's been endorsed by our current city attorney, and there's no reason why she wasn't approved. Now, you know, and I do understand the Citizens Advisory Board and their recommendation for a national search, but I also understand that there were interviews done subsequent to that recommendation. From my understanding, during the interview, Deputy City Attorney Cassandra Jackson did well, and again, I don't know of any reason as to why she wasn't approved as the next city attorney. I'm a criminal defense attorney in town, I'm a trial attorney, and one of the things I have to do when I'm preparing for trial is pick a jury. And some of you, I'm sure, have been through the jury selection process, but as an attorney, what I can't do is strike a juror based on things like gender or race. The US Supreme Court has held, basically, when one of us attorneys, whether we're a defense attorney or prosecutor, strike a juror, the other side can say objection, I would like a race-neutral reason. When the person who struck the juror can't provide a valid reason as to why they're moving to strike that juror, the court will say, you can no longer strike that juror. In this situation, again, I'm concerned and troubled because I don't, I don't understand why, and I haven't been presented with a valid reason as to why Deputy City Attorney Cassandra Jackson wasn't approved to be our next city attorney. That being said, I don't, honestly, I don't know procedurally how we get back to the vote, or if we can revisit the vote. I don't think we need to have a discussion on the city attorney recruitment process, but I would strongly recommend the city reconsider Ms. Cassandra Jackson to be our next city attorney.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mutaki Akbar, followed by Greg Marr Jr. Also, each of these on item 1102, the city manager and city attorney.
Good afternoon, Mutaki Akbar, 619 North Copeland Street, and I'm speaking on also in regards to 1102 and asking the city commission to not do a national church, search, and vote to have Cassandra Jackson as the city attorney. And my position is kind of unique. I was actually on the Citizen Advisory Committee, I was appointed by Mayor Gillum to be on that committee, and at the time, the committee did vote to move the whole slate up, the three applicants up, and to also suggest possibly doing a national search. That discussion was pretty much based on the fact that we thought that there was a small number of applicants that we received, that we didn't know if it was a timing issue, if it was a holiday issue, or just that people didn't want to, you know, come down to Tallahassee, so we did suggest maybe open that search back up. I found out later, and we was not, we were not privy to that information at the time, that the number of applicants was consistent with what the number of applicants that the city received for the city manager position, it was consistent with the number of applicants that was received for the city clerk position, and that was years and years past as well, so... So, the reasoning to go back, just because the numbers aren't what people think they should be, is not an accurate reason. The process took place. Deputy City Attorney Cassandra Jackson followed that process the way that she should have. And just because of what the climate is in the city, that's no fault to hers, she's being punished by that. And so, because that process took place, I think she should earn the benefit of being the top applicant during that process. Just looking on paper, there were-- the three qualified applicants, at least Cassandra Jackson and at least one other, had stellar, stellar accolades and experience that could do well with the city. But my understanding is that once she did the interview, she was exceptional, and she showed that she deserved that position. And I must say, with it being on the eve of Black History Month in February, I hate that it's two thousand eighteen and we have to be excited about the first black anything. But I think that it will be something special to have the first black woman city attorney that sits at-- as the city attorney for the city of Tallahassee. Unfortunately, I don't have the benefit of being blind to race or gender. And I think if somebody is qualified, they're qualified. And I especially think that if somebody in Miss Cassandra Jackson's resume and who she is, she should get what she went through as far as in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next, Greg Marr Jr., and then Joseph Wright.
Good afternoon, Greg Marr Jr. My business address is twenty-five oh seven Callaway Road. I'm not a resident of Tallahassee, but I'd like to commend this Commission on what looks to be shaping up to be a long and thorough process for selecting a new city manager. A lengthy and nationwide search is exactly what is needed. And as that time passes, you'll have an opportunity to exhibit some leadership that might demonstrate to prospective applicants that the city is back on the right track and is in fact, a great destination for the career of the kind of professional that the residents of this city deserve. You also have an immediate opportunity to demonstrate exactly the type of leadership I mentioned by choosing to do a very similar, thorough, lengthy search for a new city attorney as opposed to choosing someone from within. The reasons to choose to do it this way, well, there are many. This Commission has presided over a city that is currently under several storm clouds, if you will, and promotion from within now may not be seen to be the best choice. If this Commission were to simply lead the search to fill these positions and assemble a large pool of professional talent to what will be an incoming Commission after the coming elections, that Commission, that incoming Commission, will have three, at least three, new faces on it. And they will have just been elected by the residents of the city of Tallahassee. They could then choose from that pool of talent and interview and fill these positions. That, ladies and gentlemen, would be bold leadership on behalf of this Commission that I think would be remembered for some time to come and a very nice way to close out this era of this City Commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Joseph Wright. And Mayor probably have time for one more speaker after that, which would be William Tucker, and then we'd be at our thirty-minute mark.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, my name is Joseph Wright. I reside at four eight seven three Lake Park Drive here in Tallahassee. I stand today to address the concern and show my support for Ms. Cassandra Jackson, who has applied for the position as city attorney. When the Commission hired the former city manager, you proudly provided him a promotion opportunity, and that was good. That was good because you gave hope to your city government that the city believes in in-house promotion opportunities for its employees. Let's continue the same standard that was recently established by you, the Commissioners. Please give Ms. Jackson the same privilege as an equal employment opportunity employer as we know that you are. Her office is not under federal investigation, and she is not tainted as some would imply. She is well-qualified and board-certified. She has served eleven years faithfully and with distinction. So, let us do the right thing and the more honorable thing. And lastly, brother Mayor and Mr. Commissioners, to do a second national search would not be advisable to this body and to this community. You and I understand that any attorney that's coming from outside the state have to apply and be admitted to the Florida Bar. We understand that. We also understand that to be board-certified, it takes about a year. We understand that. And so, please, don't waste the taxpayers' money. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is William Tucker.
Bill Tucker. I know all of you one way or another. And I just want to say that, based on what I've heard and what I've read so far, I think that going on another search after you've gone through a process that you approved and it resulted in fewer candidates than you had expected, it's normal and expected because you had a strong insider. This happens all the time. I've seen it before. When a strong candidate is there, it tends to dry up the pool. Now, if you go out there and do another search, it sends a message that you're not happy with the current person, and it certainly may result in more applicants. And I think this is a bad omen for the future of Ms. Jackson. I want to appeal to some of you, and many, all of you, in fact. For example, I remember Commissioner Miller, a person I know very well. We were-- I was here along with my late wife and then, of course, the late Chuck Evans, who was head of the NAACP. I serve on that board now for the Tallahassee branch. We're all here. The room was crowded when you were serving there, and we had great expectations of you. And you've done as good a job as you can. You've tried to do the right thing, and I think that that's good. And now that you're leaving, of course, we hope that you would do one more right thing. And that is to change your position with respect to the vote of Ms. Jackson. It certainly seems reasonable, given what I know and what I've heard of her background and her qualifications, especially since she was very strongly represented by the outgoing attorney Lou Shelby. And now, that's-- if you expect his-- respect his opinion, that should count for something. It certainly should have some weight, and I think it did. But certainly, let's go ahead and clear this up. Let's not have to go through this search because it does send a bad message that you've made a mistake and then people will perceive that you didn't want her. So, certainly, you may get more candidates that way, but it's not a good thing to do. And I think you've got a chance to fix this today. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, the next speaker is Lee Johnson. We are right at the thirty-minute mark. Lee Johnson would be the next speaker.
I'm going to have to wrap the others.
Followed by Dot Inman Johnson.
Master Lee Johnson, twenty-one twenty-one Trescott Drive. When I was coming down here, a thought ran across my mind, something that I used to believe. And maybe you're familiar with it. It says, "We owe these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And to ensure these rights, governments were instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." And whenever a government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. In other words, when you're stinking and not doing your job, you know, these people have a right to alter or abolish what we have here that says they represent us, but you're not. Let me be clear, because a lot of people are dancing around the issue. The issue is, this is a political fight, and Cassandra Jackson is the victim because you guys got a political fight going on. And the bottom line is, we're suffering as citizens from lack of representation by a city attorney because you guys can't get it together. It stinks up at that dais. Now, there are some of you who are leaving. Thank God that you are. But the bottom line is, right now, is, I don't like having to come down here. I'm rarely ever down here, and I don't like because we pay you to do a fair and equitable job. My thing now with this Commission is, you better get it together because I'm going outside and you're going to be made real famous in the coming weeks because this negative action is going to be nationally-- nationwide published. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Dot Inman Johnson.
Dot Inman Johnson, twenty-one twenty-one Trescott Drive. I'm here because, all due respect to the gentleman who spoke against Cassandra Jackson, to speak in her behalf, because you don't need another national search. There was a national search, and those nine applications came as a result of that national search. There are other top officials in this government who were hired after a national search with many less applicants than the nine received in the position that Cassandra is qualified for. She-- I was on the search committee, so I know what was in those applications. And just because she rose head and shoulders above everybody else who applied is no reason to discount her application. Most people would be applauding and happy to have somebody with her qualifications. Cassandra is top candidate for that position. She has twenty years-- she looks young, but she has twenty years of local government legal experience, working as county attorney and in-- as an assistant county attorney and as an assistant and deputy city attorney in several cities in Florida, most of which has been here in Tallahassee. We just finished honoring Lou Shelley, the retiring city attorney. And Lou Shelley is in a better position. He and Jim English, who held that department for all of these years, to know who is qualified. Both have endorsed Cassandra Jackson, both. And they know what her qualifications are. She has received a municipal certification from the Florida Bar that only seven percent of all attorneys, city attorneys, in this state have received. She has represented this city on a wide range of municipal issues. She has counseled this city, County Commission. She is qualified to represent you in federal court. She has her bar-- she passed the bar thirty years ago in nineteen eighty-seven and has continually updated her qualifications and has represented this city well. It would be a discredit to this wonderful young lady. And I don't care about gender or race, it's qualifications. She is the most qualified of everybody that we looked at, and it was a national search.
Excuse me, your three minutes have expired.
To hire a head, Hunter, and go for another national search would be a waste of our money. I know all of you, and I've known you to be good people. I want you to demonstrate that by doing the right thing tonight and appointing Cassandra Jackson to that position.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've got about half the stack of-- we've gone through about half the speakers, and we've got another half that is here. What we'll do, and I regret if your issue comes up before this point, but we'll move those to the un-agenda part of the meeting, Treasury Clerk, for any of those individuals who still wish to be heard on their issues. And we did take them in the order in which they were received. Commissioners, we're now going to move on to--
Mayor. Yes. Do we have anybody here that is on a different issue than these two issues?
I have no clue.
Commissioner, all of the speakers are on those issues that have already been addressed or public hearings. So, there are no issues that you have not heard comment on.
All right. And I'd like to say this to the neighborhood. You all have very well-articulated your concerns. We have this policy that we only allow thirty minutes for the speech of people to address issues on the agenda. I think that if anyone had anything different to bring up, maybe we should ask that of the neighbors. But if any point that isn't made yet, then I'd like to hear it, but other than that--
Commissioner, if we extend, we're going to extend to have the rest of the speakers heard. That will be the position. Commissioners, we're now at the point of appearances by City Commission-appointed boards and committees. I don't believe that there are any. We're at consent, and item nine point zero four has been moved to item ten point zero one.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion for consent. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve consent. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on to City Commission, item ten point zero one. And again, that is the previous nine point zero four.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to tee this item up for the Commission's consideration. The item before you recommends the purchase of property located at seven fifty-two Spencer Road of relevance. In late two thousand seventeen, the property owner contacted the city's real estate office and offered the sale of this property. As a matter of background, you heard some earlier today, tonight, this property is contiguous to what we call BP sixteen. That's Substation sixteen. Actually, you see an image on your screen that's bounded in red. That is an existing substation that is in the Rose Hill property. It's an easement in the Rose Hill property. That's my house across the street from it. I didn't get to speak. I'm directly across the street from it.
I'm sorry, we're going to go ahead and maintain order. Yes, sir.
You'll recall, in two thousand sixteen, the city worked with the Rose Hill subdivision to convert a temporary easement to a permanent easement. There was quite a bit of effort in that regard. The reason was that temporary easement was expiring in late two thousand sixteen, and it would have necessitated potentially the moving of that substation completely and entirely, and that substation serves the area, and it's a growing area, I think, as we all know. Ultimately, we reached an agreement with Rose Hill to arrange for a permanent easement so that substation can stay where it is. It's directly under the transmission lines. And the terms were that we paid the Rose Hill neighborhood ninety-five thousand dollars of one-time fee for the easement, and it resolved all the issues related to the attorney's fees and the cost in that effort. And you'll remember, that was an extensive effort. Rose Hill also agreed to assist us in acquiring state land. There's some state land that's southeast of that location, adjacent, it's kind of down on the bottom of the screen, if you're looking at the screen. And they actually offered to assist in the acquisition of that land, and that offer still stands. They also indicated they would not object to any possible future site. So, it brought permanency to that location at the time. But we knew, somewhere in the future, we would have to expand the capacity of that substation. It would not be adequate to meet the growing demand of the area. Several locations were identified. They were noted at the time that you had your discussion, one being that state land that I mentioned just a moment ago. And so, those are on our radar. There is no projected need for additional capacity at the moment. In fact, as we plan forward and we look normally at ten-year planning windows, as you know, it's at the tail end of that window. It could exit that ten-year window. It could be a little earlier, dependent upon growth, but we know it's at the outer bounds of what we normally plan for. However, when the property owner contacted us, offering to sell the property that you see outlined in yellow there on your screen, we gave it consideration because the Spencer Road property, in fact-- Road property, in fact, was one of the locations we identified for potential expansion to add capacity at some time in the future. And so we wanted to bring it forward. We wanted to share this opportunity. It clearly would be earlier than we may have otherwise acted, but since there was voluntary action, we wanted to give it consideration. If you authorized the purchase, it would be an option for future expansion. It would not be the total option, it would be an option. And again, there are no changes in the immediate future to do anything. So the home would stay, the use of the home would stay. In fact, I'm sure we would do nothing in the near term as it relates to that actual location. If we move forward, however, as we get to the end of that planning window and we decide that's the location, if the other locations are not possible and we need to expand the capacity, we would work with the neighborhood to make sure that we have a compact substation. If you look at that substation, you compare it to other substations you see around the city, it is a very, very small substation. In fact, I would call it a microstation. But it does meet the needs of the area. We would be committed to working out a compact substation so that it would not encumber all of the land, and we would have adequate buffer. We would maintain the ingress egress that you see on Ox Bottom Road. We would not enter from Spencer Road. And in fact, I'm confident we could have...
Is there a house there?
Actually, it's a very lovely neighborhood. I think the house there is nice. But anyhow, I wanted to make that...
Guys, we, I'm sorry, this is actually not, I'm sorry, this isn't how the conversation works. We have public input and then we have the, he's presenting the public item, and then the commission will have some debate, some discussion about the issue. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, so the buffering, Mr. Mayor...
Sir, you can either follow what the rules are of the chamber, or you can exit. That's your choice.
Mr. Mayor, and the buffering, you know, we follow your lead. You guys have been very clear on items like this, that buffering is important, the aesthetics of an area is important, and so I'm very confident you can maintain that with a footprint. Again, it's an option that we felt compelled to bring forward as the homeowner offered us the opportunity to buy it. I can have Judy walk through the details of the purchase if you would like, or we can at this point answer your questions.
I think we had a couple of questions in the queue. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to address some of the comments made about disappointment in the city commission for bringing this. This is a staff item brought by the city commission. So this is the first time the city commission is hearing this particular item. And of course, the decision before us is to purchase it, not to make a decision yet on the substation. I don't want to blame the staff because this is what the staff is supposed to do with the electric utility. Just give me a chance to make my comments, I think you'll be happy. They're supposed to be forward-thinking and planning as it relates to our substation. So I understand that, and I'm glad they brought it for us, before us. We get to make the final policy decision. I was unaware of this agenda item until I was, my aide was contacted by Ms. Lucy Morgan. I was also unaware of anybody that lives on Spence Drive except Mac McLendon. I was at his house 25 years ago. So I have not driven down the street. My original knowledge of this, when the original discussion came on was Rose Hill. In my mind, it was a lot less uninhabited than I see all of you here today. That's my mistake because I haven't gone and looked at it. I haven't had to because we haven't had an agenda item. So in my thought, in my head, there was a couple of houses on a corner and there wasn't a whole lot of people around it. Given what we have heard tonight, this is my opinion, given what we've heard tonight, I don't want to replace problems in one neighborhood with problems in another neighborhood. If we had problems in Rose Hill, I don't want to replace that with problems on Spence Drive. We try our best as a government not to disrupt people. You have to have public utilities, you have to have public use of things, and sometimes we have to make hard decisions. But before I supplant the problems of one neighborhood into the problems of another, I would want to exhaust all options of putting it in a place that is not inhabited. So as far as my vote, I'm gonna vote against the item and recommend that we not move forward on purchase of the home.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess I'm gonna ask a question. Well, what I'm gonna ask for, Mr. City Manager, is that we discuss what the other options are, because there are other options. But those come with a price. You know, and I read with interest the comments made by our colleague on the county commission about finding or looking at those other options. And I would, after hearing, if we can hear that, the other options, Mr. Mayor, if the county would be willing to supplement what we're willing to pay to make those other options available to us. It comes with a price. In some instances, a very hefty price. And if this community says that they're willing to pay that hefty price, I'm good with it. But I think we all should hear what the other options are. I don't see it as being a problem. It's an issue that we've got to deal with. We've got to, we're a growing community. The northeastern part of the community is growing like you wouldn't believe, or I guess you would believe if you live out that way. And we've got to make sure that we provide utilities for the individuals and businesses in that part of our community. I certainly commend our staff for being this forward-thinking and looking out 10 years to what the needs of this community will be, such that when you flip your switch, your lights come on. That you have the electricity that you need to power your appliances. And so that's what we're attempting to do here. So I don't, I don't see it as a problem from one community to the other. I see it as us addressing an issue that will face this community in the years to come, and our staff being forward-thinking rather than reacting to this when it's right upon us. And so, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask if we could hear what the other options are, and if there is an appetite for addressing those other options, then we can have that discussion.
I know we've got Commissioner Ziffer in queue, but City Manager, are you all prepared to go through those options tonight, or is this something you need to, you may need to brief the commission on?
Mr. Mayor, I can tell you generally, and then we'll get more detailed information. I can do it real quickly. I mentioned the state property earlier...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a quick question?
Before you...
Before you do that, because I just want to express very quickly my thoughts, and I see Commissioner Miller's expressing, and there may not be any need because there may be enough votes to push this to a future date, in which case these options can be discussed then. So if we could just, very quickly, if that's okay?
No, 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 no. I asked that the options...
Fine, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Would you walk through those, and then Commissioner, we'll go back to, Commissioner Ziffer, was that a motion? Were you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna make a motion to remove this from the agenda and move it to a future meeting after staff has an opportunity to engage the community and figure out what other options are.
Second.
Commissioners, I understand process-wise, I understand process-wise. I'm going to allow the city manager to respond to the question that's on the floor, and Commissioner, I'll take up the motion afterwards.
Mr. Mayor, I'll hit the high points on the other locations, and then we'll get more information for you. I mentioned earlier that there's state-owned property to the southeast of this location to move that substation from where it is today. There is a cost, and we can get you that information. We did identify it as a possible solution. Keep in mind that the state controls that land, and that it's sometimes very, very difficult to acquire the land, so we've had that in the back of our mind. Other property that we noted was owned by the Bush family to the northwest. Again, moving it, there was a cost. I will get you that information. I do not have it on the top of my head. And then lastly, it was a city-owned site, but it was at a distance that would require an additional transmission line be built so that we would have to take land to build that transmission wire. That was the most costly and probably the most impactful site we had.
When you say cost, I'm sorry, how specific can you be on the cost estimates?
If my recollection serves me, it was, the state was about a $2 million extra cost. The Bush property was similar, and the radio site, I believe, was a $6 million additional cost. That's subject to check. I'll confirm those numbers.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I had a follow-up, because I was going somewhere with this. When I had a briefing with the city manager the other day, the very first question that I asked him was, had we reached out to the homeowners association? I was told at that point, I was told at that point that there was not a homeowners association, that it had not been...
Just out of all due respect, we're gonna try and have this as civilly as we can, and if the facts bear out differently, we will, we will make that clear through the process. Commissioner Richardson.
And I believe that the city manager was telling me what he thought at the time was the case, that there was not a homeowners association. What I suggested to him, under those circumstances, was that we reach out to each individual homeowner if that was in fact the case, because I wanted to avoid exactly what we're seeing here this afternoon. That neighborhoods have to come and literally be at odds with their commission when their neighborhoods are gonna be impacted and they're not notified. It's the very thing that I told him during that briefing. And so if that hasn't happened, and there has not been a compromise worked out, as it was with Rose Hill, then I wouldn't support this either. I've not supported items like this, and I hope that none ever come to us again where, if not a homeowners association, or a neighborhood association, or even individual property owners have not been approached and given the opportunity to give their input before it gets to this point, I hope that doesn't happen again. But if it does, I will vote against it every time. And so for that reason, I will not support this item going forward today as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there, is there a neighborhood association president that's present here for this group? Great. And your name, sir? Thank you very much. Commissioners, there is a, got it. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Maddox had, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ziffer had a motion on the floor, which I believe, help me if I get it wrong, is to push this item from this agenda.
I'll...
To restate it. And then Commissioner...
The motion stands, but I'm gonna just add just a couple of suggestions that now that I can say something. Based upon what I'm looking at, and what the city manager and I had a discussion about, the amount of land that's actually needed for what we're talking about is a very small part of those two lots. So even if after this exhaustive search, we come back to this, there is an opportunity to create tremendous amount of plantings or whatever you all might see happen there. Because I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, okay, if it's only gonna utilize another area the size of that red, there may be an opportunity for some park space or whatever. I don't know. And I don't know where y'all are going with this, but all I'm suggesting is to keep an open mind of what the opportunity is. I'd like to put some time-specific date when this will come back to us, because I don't want it to be six, or eight, or 12 months, or whatever. If perhaps by our summer break, we could come back and have some options laid out to us, that would give time for our staff to work with the homeowners and have some idea. Perhaps these houses or this lot is still available to us at that point for whatever is being presented. But I want to get this done, but I want to make sure that we do it right and they're engaged. So my motion stands, and that is that we don't vote on this tonight. We look at options and we ask staff to work with the homeowners association to try and determine if this is the best place or what the other options are.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Maddox was in line before. Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Richardson.
I just want to briefly say, one, I appreciate our collegial body, and I want to make sure that Commissioner Richardson got all his information. And I didn't want his comments to be misconstrued. When you watch enough of us on this dais over time, we're all a bit of a broken record. If you ever go to CRA meeting, you hear me talk about infrastructure over and over, and I don't want to fund anything other than infrastructure. You hear Commissioner Miller talk about stormwater and the environment over and over. You've heard Commissioner Ziffer talk about homelessness, or the arts, or spaying neuter your pets. You hear the mayor talk about the crime problem. Without question, every one of these items that have come up during Commissioner Richardson's tenure, he has asked, has a neighborhood notified? Have we talked to the neighborhood? Are they our partners in this? He has been stalwart on ensuring that neighborhoods are involved. And I just wanted y'all to know that because I know that's in his heart, and I think we'll come to a good result on this.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Richardson.
I think, I'm just gonna pass.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I appreciate those remarks. But again, I think there are options. We certainly can, and I, first of all, want to thank our staff for the work that they have done on this. But I hope you get the message that we really don't want these kinds of items coming back before us unless the homeowners association and neighborhood associations have been consulted and worked with. And we've seen very positive examples of that. Myers Park was one, and there are lots of others. That's the first one that comes to mind. But I don't castigate staff for what they've done. They have gone out and did what they thought we expected of them, and they've come back with a recommendation. Now, it was up to us to either accept or reject that recommendation, but what we're telling them is to go back and come up with some other options, work with the homeowners association, and see if we can come to some amenable compromise. And so that's where we are, and I do support your motion in that respect, Commissioner Ziffer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There are no other comments. Commissioners, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're on to the next item. Item 11.0...
Could I, could I add a follow-up to that?
Yes, please.
As far as what the staff is supposed to do next? You know, I was very surprised that there were this many people that didn't know about this. We had to deal with Rose Hill, you know, that conversation went on for two years, basically. And at that time, I did go out and I did drive, I spent a whole afternoon talking to the folks in Rose Hill. And also, we drove over and drove all through your neighborhood, too. This was, just so that you're aware of it, the staff knows that at some time in the future, there's going to be a need to do something about the situation. They, basically, this man came and offered his property for sale, and all they were doing was bringing it here to see what the level of interest was. It wasn't a done deal. And so I don't want you to leave here feeling that somebody was trying to slip something under the radar or anything, because that wasn't the case. They did their jobs, and they brought it to us for us to discuss, and you did your jobs. You came in and you made us aware that a lot more information needed to be exchanged between you. But I do feel that you all need to sit down with the staff and find out exactly what this is about. And because some, I don't think it's going to, this is not a generating plant, like, you know, with pollution and that type of thing. And so I think that everybody's gonna walk away with a lot better knowledge of what, I believe it was Commissioner Ziffer said, were opportunities possibly for that part of your neighborhood even. I mean, it may be a better ending, and you can design that. And that's all in your future. And that's, I'm saying that to you now because I'm saying it to our staff also, that that's what we expect, that they will go and they will work with you on this problem, whether it ends up with moving this thing or what. But please don't leave here thinking that anybody was trying to, you know, do anything without including you, because that is not anyone's intention.
Thank you all. Thank you all. There's actually staff in the back of the room if you want to make any additional comments or recommendations. Thank you all very much. We're moving on to the, to the next item. Commissioners, we're now at item 11.01, Tallahassee Leon County Commission Appointment on the Status of Women.
Move, approve.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Ziffer.
Well, because this is my point, Rebecca, if you could just stand, because you've been waiting patiently for two hours. Welcome to the commission. We're glad you're doing this. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We're now on to item 11.02, and this will be introduced, I assume, by the treasurer clerk or the, oh, I'm sorry, Raoul Lavine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. As you'll recall, at the city commission retreat on January 10th, we discussed a process for the recruitment of the city manager position, which is currently vacant. And tonight, we're asking you to formalize that process. As we described it at that time, we looked at best practices from the International City-City Management Association and applied those in what we recommended and dis... City County Management Association, and applied those in what we recommended and discussed at the January 10th city commission retreat. And that would include hiring of an executive research firm, including a community component, by having a committee that would help us review the applications and be part of the process, and with a goal of having a pool of candidates that the city commission can interview at the end of this process. At that time, we told you that we thought a full process following best practices would take six to nine months to complete. So tonight, we're asking you to approve options one, or recommending options one through four, as it relates to the city manager recruitment. At the January 17th interview process for the city attorney position, the city commission requested that we bring that item back for discussion, and so we're seeking guidance and direction from you on that position.
Got it. Commissioner Richardson?
Mr. Mayor, I move options one through four on the city manager search process.
There's a motion to move option one through four on the city manager search. There's a second. There are no other comments. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Is that a no?
No.
Oh, okay. Motion passes unanimously. Well, rather for Commissioner Maddox out of chamber. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we offer the position of city attorney to Ms. Cassandra Jackson, the current deputy city attorney for the city of Tallahassee.
Pass the gavel, second. All right, all those, any comments on the motion before we take a vote?
Well, one comment I have is that I really want Commissioner Maddox to be here for the vote.
I'm sorry he, I'm sorry he left.
I know, I'm sorry he's too. Would you like to see me leave also?
I beg your pardon?
Would you like for me to leave also? I mean, I just don't, this is such, has become such a controversial issue, that I really, basically, am offended by the fact that one commissioner has stepped out of the room. So, having said that, I'd really prefer that he would come back for the vote, and the discussion.
Can't make him come back.
Can someone find out if Commissioner Maddox is available?
Call him.
To rejoin the meeting?
There he is.
I think.
All right, Commissioner Maddox is present.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, when you gotta go, you gotta go.
I understand, ma'am. Commissioners, we're, there's a motion and a second on the floor to, this is in regards to the agenda item on the hiring of the city manager. City attorney, the city manager piece has already passed. Recommendations of segments one, two, three, and four on that item. And there's a motion now to offer the position of city attorney to Ms. Cassandra Jackson. And Commissioner Miller wanted you present here for the conversation.
Sure.
Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. You know, when we met last, I was hoping for consensus on our commission, so I'd like to hear from everybody on where they are, before we go to a vote, and then, you know, perhaps I'll have a substitute motion, or perhaps we'll just move forward with this one, but I wanted to hear where everyone is.
Anybody want to jump in? Commissioner Miller?
It's interesting, I'm glad that I asked Commissioner Maddox to come back, because I have the very same interest, and I am interested in hearing what the entire commission feels about this. You know, I had Reverend Johnson tell me earlier before the meeting that he knew why I was, I had, was holding the position that I was holding, and I was real interested in that, since I hadn't talked to him about it. And I hadn't actually had the opportunity to share what had held me back from having committed my complete support. One of the things that has given me a real pause here, is that this has become a very controversial issue, and it is really, unfortunately, it's a pro and con on the city attorney's office in general, and our habit of hiring internally. A lot of people in the community are tired of it, frankly, and they've expressed those concerns to us. And then a lot of people in, I've talked to 100 people about this topic. And I can tell you that people from all over this entire community have a different opinion about it. And it's not a north-south issue, it's not an east-west issue. Everybody, in every part of town, has a different opinion about what we should do in this particular instance. With that situation on the table, I felt that it was more important for us to get as much input as possible from any potential applicant that we could, that we could get. I thought that strengthened the hand of the eventual holder of the office. We can rush through and do one thing, we can not rush through, we can do something else, but the fact is that this is not my city attorney, this is your city attorney, all of you, and all of you, and all the people that are out there who might not have anything better to do tonight than listen to this meeting. But the fact is that this person represents all of you, and needs to do a lot of different things for all of the people in the city. And for that reason, I wanted, it is very definitely the right of the citizens to demand that they get the very best person for the job. And many people felt that advertising over Thanksgiving, when we were also embroiled in another controversy, which had to do with our city manager, that this probably wasn't the best time to have thrown out that quote, what some are calling a national search, what I call a fishing expedition, because all we did was do an ad. We didn't go and look for anybody. Now, I agree with the folks that have said that there's no reason to look all over the world, because the person has to be a board-certified, bar-certified...
Board or board manager.
...person from Florida. And so, personally, I would rather we just looked in Florida. But it's really not me, it's you. And it's the input that I've received that has led me to the point where the community at large seems to feel that they would be more comfortable doing a, doing a real search, where we hire somebody who comes up here and interviews each one of us, and says, what is it that you think you need? And then they go, and maybe they come back with an internal person, maybe they don't. But, right now, I just don't feel that it is, has been vetted to the extent that it should. And for those people who think there is anything, any other reason that I personally would have for not hiring Ms. Jackson, you are so sadly mistaken. First of all, if anyone would like a woman in management over here, it would certainly be me. And as far as any other issue, it's all about the credentials and the work history. So that's my personal position on it, and so you asked, and now you've heard it.
Commissioner Ziffer?
Well, my position is, literally, position has changed since Monday, because I'm not going to be here a year from now. And I know that brings great joy to some, at least one person in this room, maybe more, and that's okay. I don't take kindly to threats. I mean, I never have, my whole life. It doesn't make me want to go in that direction. But having said that, the same situation for me now is top of mind, as is for the city manager, and that is nine, a little more than nine months now, there are going to be three new people up here. And those three new people are going to be the bosses of the city attorney, the city manager, and the new city auditor. And I'm not sure we're going to get a whole lot of applicants because of that. Because if I were applying for a job, I'd think about who my boss is going to be nine months from now, because I'm not sure I'd want to apply. So, I'm going to offer an alternative motion, and it is that we follow the same procedure as we do for the city manager, recognizing the decision, and the interviews are going to take place. In fact, I'm going to suggest this, after the new commission is seated, and that we go ahead and hire Cassandra Jackson as our interim city attorney, to serve out the time until that moment occurs, and the new city commission decides that. I'm not trying to pass the buck, I'm just trying to recognize that we're not going to get a whole lot of applicants right now. We've got a cloud over the city, we've got three new positions that are going to be available here, I don't know who to apply. And so that bothers me, so that would be my alternative motion.
There's a substitute motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, substitute motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't agree with everything in the motion, so I couldn't support it, but what I would like to do, after hearing from my colleagues, all of my colleagues, I would like to, first of all, deal with interim. If there's a way to have a motion for the interim, I believe that we have, that Cassandra Jackson is absolutely qualified. I think that we had two qualified applicants in the last process, and that Cassandra Jackson is absolutely qualified, and should be the interim. I'd like to deal with that, so we take the personalities out of the process, and then we can talk about the process.
I'll withdraw my motion, and second yours.
Okay, I move that Cassandra Jackson be named the interim city attorney.
There's a motion and a second to name Cassandra Jackson as the interim attorney. I had a few comments on the first, and then Commissioner Richardson, I see you in the pipeline. Obviously, we had this conversation during the original vote on the next city manager, and city attorney, and because there are personalities involved in it, I do think it's important to manage that part of the conversation. The facts are, is that we did have and advertise a national search with a set of criteria for a candidate to respond. We did get candidates who responded, and just so that we can be reminded of how this has happened in some of the other positions in the government. In the case of the city auditor, Bert Fletcher was selected to succeed Sam McCall with a formal process that attracted two applicants total. Bert was an internal candidate at the time. The city treasurer clerk position, the one that Jim Cook now holds, he succeeded Gary Herndon through a formal process, where Jim was an internal candidate. The city attorney Lou Shelley was selected by this commission, following the retirement of Jim English, with a formal process that attracted two total candidates. Lou was the internal candidate. And the process of the city manager, Mr. Fernandez, who succeeded Anita Favors Thompson, in that incident, there was no formal process, no resume, no background check, no interview, a motion made by the city commission at an unscheduled meeting for the selection of the city attorney, for discussion of the process for the selection of the city manager, and he was selected in a 3-2 vote. Later, made, I believe, a unanimous vote, in the spirit of solidarity, where both myself and Commissioner Richardson changed our votes to support. In this process, nine candidates were responsive to the inquiry, more than any of the other positions that we fielded over these last 15 years. One of those candidates, Ms. Cassandra Jackson, was an internal candidate, was interviewed alongside two other candidates that were deemed to be qualified. And not only did she perform well on the day of her interview, but her resume is unquestioned, And more than anything, she sits in a class of legal professionals with credentials that fewer than 10% of lawyers in this state hold. She's eminently qualified for this position. And someone said it in their comments, and it stung when I first heard it, but it's a true statement, that we have a qualified candidate who is basically suffering under the weight of issues that we as a commission and a group of elected officials carry, not she as an applicant. And I think it's extremely unfortunate that we would parlay the issues of a body of individual elected officials, parlay those issues onto an applicant who, again, is eminently qualified for the position that she applies. There was a comment made that we should make this decision without regard to race or gender. And it always strikes me as strange when I hear that, especially when the applicant is a person of a, maybe a female gender, or a person of color. Because sometimes those statements allow, or at least in my mind, are intended to make those of us who are in the selection seat feel, that we're only making the decision based off of those superficial characteristics, and not off the quality or the content of the character, or the quality of the assets that the candidate he or she themselves bring. So if you were to remove race, and you were to remove gender, which we can't do, obviously, and frankly, I wouldn't want to, I think that those are, those are elements that are important to the color of the law, because people's lived experience oftentimes informs a lot of their decision-making, and in this case, I think to the better. But if you remove all of that, and you were to look at her, this candidate simply on their qualifications and on their credentials, easily Cassandra would be the unmitigated choice for this position. And I have not heard, in the course of our conversation as a commission, and I'll try to recite at least what I've heard as reasons for not supporting her candidacy, that there are not enough applicants. And I think just our record alone kind of demonstrates how this commission has seen the volume of applicants, when making decisions around who to hire in these directly appointed positions. That it is an internal hire. I just want to remind the commission that a few years ago, we made it a part of the city manager's charge to secession plan. In fact, the very meeting that Mr. Fernandez was out of order, nominated and selected as a city manager, it was intended to discuss secession planning in the government. We made that a charge for the city leadership, that they would begin the process of hiring individuals and cultivating talent within their departments, to make them ready for these positions, should they become vacant. So they've done that, and that was at our request. Some say that because we don't have a number of candidates, that what we got was a less-than-qualified or acceptable pool. And again, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, I think that that is rightly disputed and negated, when you simply take a look at the resume, certainly in the case of Ms. Cassandra Jackson. I realize, because I know how to count, I see what is happening here. But I think it couldn't go without at least acknowledging the superior credentials of the current deputy city attorney for the city of Tallahassee, for an attorney who has been bar-certified in the state of Florida for over 30 years, for the attorney who has 20 years of experience as the attorney and local government, relevant experience for the job that we're seeking, for an applicant who has almost 15 years of that experience right here in the city of Tallahassee, city government, for a candidate who served as the former human resources manager in interim, assistant city manager for transportation and land management, here in the city of Tallahassee, also very relevant considering the types of issues that come before the city attorney's office, for a candidate who has served as the assistant city attorney of the city of St. Petersburg, for an attorney who has extensive experience in employment, labor, land use, code enforcement, contract development, public records, and ethics law, a graduate with a bachelor's, a BA, as well as a JD from Stetson University. Again, a woman and a candidate who I believe to be eminently qualified, who just so happens to be, a woman of color, and a woman. And while she has my unquestioned support in this position, and I'm going to vote against the motions, except for the one that Commissioner Richardson made, I just think it's important to lay bare her record, because it's a record that has been labored over, over a life's work, and is deserving of fair consideration, and we certainly shouldn't put the monkeys that are on the backs of maybe many of us, or this commission, onto a candidate who, again, is of unquestionable rapport, and is eminently qualified for the position that she's applied for. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I first want to address the issue of process, because I remember distinctly at the meeting where this issue of secession planning for the city manager came up, I was new to the commission. I had only been here three months prior to that meeting where this issue came up. When the issue came up, at the end of the meeting, I told my colleagues, listen, I've only been here three months. I have not seen the assistant manager's resume... When the issue came up at the end of the meeting, I told my colleagues, "Listen, I've only been here three months. I have not seen the assistant manager's resume, nor has he come to my office to talk to me about what his issues are, what his vision for the city is, how we can work together." Yet despite those issues, legitimate issues being raised, as new as I was to this position, they were ignored, and he was made city manager in training. City manager in training. So we talk about process. But when we got to the process of hiring a replacement city attorney, it was one that at least all of us approved of. Everyone sitting on this dais approved of the process. We told staff to go forward with advertising. If there was a question about the timing of the advertising, it should have come up then. Nobody questioned that the advertisement was put out November, early December. We did it with the advice of someone who was identified to us as someone that could assist us with where to properly place the ad, to make sure that we got an adequate number of applicants, which was done. We followed the process. The ad was put out, applications came in, we had a citizens committee that vetted the applications and determined that we had three that met the minimum qualifications, and those persons were interviewed. It was clear from that interview who the most qualified candidate was, and that was Cassandra Jackson. There was no question, no question. But yet, when she rose to the top, then there started to be questions raised about, "Well, look at when we advertised, and maybe we should do another national search and get a headhunter this time, and waste the $30,000 of the taxpayers' money for a headhunting firm." When this commission, or members of this commission, said in an open meeting to staff, to our appointed officials, "If you are not training someone to succeed you in your position, then you're not doing your job." That's almost a verbatim quote. Lou Shelley and Jim English both have recommended Cassandra to replace the two of them in this So I'm not quite sure of where the controversy comes from. I have not heard any controversy in the community. I've heard people who have taken the time to come to this committee or this commission meeting this evening to speak on her behalf. Nobody has called me. I've been all over this community. Not one person has approached me and said, "We don't like what you're doing. You're doing the wrong thing." I've got two cell phones, neither of them have rang with anybody protesting. Maybe I don't get those kind of calls, because the people knew that I was supporting Cassandra. Maybe they just decided they wouldn't waste their time on this commissioner. And so I think, and especially this question of internal hires, because what this sends, the message that this sends to our internal employees, particularly when it comes to our appointed officials, is when there's an opening, or if you're hired, don't bother doing the things that you think will allow you to progress in the organization and at some point be appointed to that top position, because we don't hire from within. The community has said they're tired of us hiring from within. I haven't heard that from the community, but maybe some people have. Tired of us hiring from within. That's our responsibility as elected officials. So that's my position on this, Mr. Mayor. We're setting a very dangerous precedent here. If the issue is we don't want to hire from within, because we've got a very capable interim city manager, we've got three very capable assistant city managers that, if they're interested, I would like to see them apply to be our city manager. But what we're telling them is, "You're internal. Don't bother to apply. We're going to go outside," because people are tired of us hiring from within, because of this cloud that exists over City Hall. I don't see the cloud. Is there an FBI investigation? Yes, there was an FBI, there's an ongoing FBI investigation of the Leon County School District. But nobody says there's a cloud over our school district or the administrative offices at the school board. Our staff work hard every day. They report to this building, they report to facilities that we've got throughout this city. They work hard every day. They do what's right by the citizens of this city. Those that are responsible for the FBI investigation will be dealt with appropriately when the time comes. And as the Democrat so aptly wrote, "That could be this year, it could be two years from now, it could be five years from now." So are we going to let this supposed cloud over City Hall continue to strangle, have a stranglehold over us, and we not do everything we can to move this city forward? I don't think so. That's not why I ran for the city commission, and it's not why I continue to serve. Tallahassee is a wonderful city to live. I love this city. I'm raising my family here. I will retire and die in the city of Tallahassee. And I would hope that all of us feel that way. And regardless of an FBI investigation, that we would all be committed to continuing to make this community be the best that she can be, under any circumstance. And so I just am flabbergasted as to why, at this point, we want to change the rules and the process and not offer this position to an individual who is eminently qualified. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, there's a motion and a second on the floor. The motion is to have Ms. Jackson to serve as the interim city attorney. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. Just closing on my motion. I agree with so much of what you said, Commissioner Richardson. I want to clarify that. Number one, I have no problem with an inside candidate for any job in the city of Tallahassee. Number two, I completely agree that Ms. Jackson is qualified and was the best qualified from the recent search. Yeah, I don't even, I don't even want to talk about race. I supported the first African-American city manager and voted for her not once but twice over 20 years ago. And Mr. Fernandez was the first Hispanic city manager. The processes that I've been through, I have not been through the recent ones that were named, that the mayor named, other than the city manager. The ones I went through was for city manager 20-plus years ago, where we had a headhunter, we had citizens committees, we had lots of applicants and lots of interviews for what resulted, over my vote, of being Steve Burkett, and then what resulted the second time of being Anita Favors. We did the same thing for the city auditor Sam McCall at the time. And of course, on this agenda that we just approved, we're doing that for our city manager, opening and hiring a headhunter and going through that process. I'm not saying that I'm in favor of that here, and I'll deal with the process in a minute, but I did want to clarify that and say that I am completely open to folks from within, and I believe that we have a qualified applicant, for sure.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Mr. Mayor, the potential for race-baiting that's going on happened earlier this week via the Speaker of the Florida House of Representatives, Richard Corkren, when it came to sanctuary cities. And you were first in line, Mr. Mayor, calling him out for that. We don't want to have that here in our city. I know the mayor doesn't want to have it, and I know none of us want to have it. That's not who we are. But by the same token, Commissioner Richardson, I understand your position, but sometimes we just disagree. And that's why we're elected, is because we're elected because people at the time like who we are. And from time to time, we may not agree on everything. I'm looking forward to hearing some recommendations that Commissioner Maddox might have of how we move forward, but at this time, I'm going to be supportive of identifying Cassandra Jackson as our interim city attorney until such time as we identify the permanent.
There's a motion and a second to name Ms. Jackson as the interim city attorney. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. No. Motion passes 3 to 2. Commissioners, we are at the 6 o'clock hour, which means we need to go into public hearings, and we'll take up the remainder part of that motion following the introduction, the public hearing process. City Attorney.
Mayor, we're going to the items on public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. So we're at item 15.01. 15.01 is a continuation of the public hearing on ordinance number 17-0-33AA. It's a right-of-way management ordinance. As you may recall, last year, there was significant legislative change in this area, which necessitated a total rewrite of our right-of-way ordinance. We have been working with vendors in the industry, in the communications industry particularly. We've also been working with representatives from the county, and I can tell you that the county passed their ordinance back in December. The ordinance as presented to you today tracks what the county passed, so we'll be together on that. And at this point, I'd suggest we go ahead and take any public hearing on this particular ordinance, and then if there are further follow-up questions you have of me or Kristin McRae, the attorney in our office who's been working on this, we'll try to answer those.
There are no speakers, Mayor.
No speakers. There's a motion. Is there a second on the item?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the item. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes 4.
Was there something?
4-0, item 15.02.
15.02, it is continuation of the first and only public hearings on ordinance numbers 17-0-35AA and 17-0-34AA, reflecting water and wastewater rate changes.
There are no speakers.
Move the items, Mayor.
There's a motion. Is there a second on the item? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes 4-0. Item 15.03.
15.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 17-0-36, amending Chapter 21, Article 9 of the Code of General Ordinances, and also the adoption of Resolution 18-R-001. The title of the ordinance is, an ordinance amending sections 21-346, 21-347, 21-353, 21-354, 21-356, 21-357, section also 21-376, 21-378, and finally, 21-383 of the City of Tallahassee General Code. It relates to discharges of the wastewater system and pretreatment. And there is a separate resolution that goes with this relating to the rates, and the resolution. Just give me one second. The resolution is number 18-R-01.
There are no speakers.
Move acceptance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the item. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes 4-0. Item 15.04.
15.04 is the first and only public hearing, ordinance number 17-0, and also the description, that is, the adoption of the annual update to the City of Tallahassee Comprehensive Plan Improvement Schedule. Again, the title of the ordinance, 15-043, is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee updating capital improvement elements of the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan.
No speakers on this item.
Move approval.
There's a motion to approve. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 15.05.
15.05 is the first and only public hearing, an ordinance number 17-0-44. It's an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, amending Chapter 14, Article 4 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city. The title of the ordinance specifically is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 14-1.001, 14-4.302, 14-4.304, 14-4.306, 14-4.307, 14-4.310, 14-4-316, 14-319, 14-4.325, 14-4-331, 14-4.335, and creating in Article 4, Section 14-4, 400, through 14-4.999 of the Code of the City of Tallahassee's Code of General Ordinance relating to firefighter pension benefits and contributions.
There are no speakers.
No speakers. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on approval. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 15.06.
15.06, the first and only public hearing, a resolution 18-R-04, that proposed abandonment of an 8.65 feet wide by 399 feet long portion of right-of-way between Stern Street and the CSX Railroad.
No speakers.
Move acceptance. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the item. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes 4 to 0. Commissioner Miller out of chambers. Commissioner, did you vote on that? Miller, did you vote on the?
I did.
Okay, unanimous. I apologize if the record could reflect. Item 15.07.
15.07 is the first and only public hearing, ordinance number 17-0-45, adding provisions relating to the Ethics Code and the Ethics Board. There is a second ordinance involving this agenda item, ordinance number 17-0-46AA. That's an amendment to the City of Tallahassee Charter to change the composition of the independent Ethics Board to allow for the public defender to make the appointment to a position on the board, which is now held by the Chief Judge of the Second Judicial Circuit.
There are several speakers on this item, Mayor.
Okay.
The first speaker is Peter Butzine, followed by Erwin Jackson. As with the earlier portion of our meeting, each speaker will have three minutes for his or her remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Peter Butzine. I am a resident of the City of Tallahassee, and I appear on behalf of Common Cause and Citizens for Ethics Reform. While we acknowledge the commission's efforts to improve Tallahassee's Ethics Code, the proposed ordinance, in our opinion, falls well short of the mark. Time limitations suggest that I confine my remarks to just two points. First, we strongly oppose the proposed requirement that ethics complaints must be sworn. Whistleblowers, especially city employees and contractors, should be able to submit complaints anonymously. We cannot expect those who may be subject to retribution to step forward if their identity is known to those who have power over their livelihoods. Second, the proposed ordinance requires that misuse of public position be the result Second, the proposed ordinance requires that misuse of public position be the result of corrupt intent. When adopting this near impossible standard of proof at your October 25th workshop, Commissioner Maddox had the temerity to suggest that it would actually be easier to prove that a public official had acted corruptly rather than knowingly and intentionally. Commissioner Maddox, as an attorney, you all, you know all too well that proving corrupt intent is near impossible. And since Mr. Ziffer is the president of the League of Cities in Tallahassee, is one of its members, I also feel compelled to comment on Mike Sittig's op-ed piece in Sunday's Tallahassee Democrat. The League has long resisted strengthening Florida's open meetings and open records, open records, ethics, and campaign finance laws, and I find it disingenuous for the League's executive director to suggest that ethics ordinances are best made and enforced at the state level. According to Mr. Ziffer's own January 23rd op-ed piece, government is most effective when it's closest to the people. Two-thirds of Tallahassee's voters agreed when they passed the 2014 charter amendment calling for significantly stronger and more enforceable ethics and campaign finance provisions than Florida's weak ethics and elections laws. At a time when ethics is front and center to concern of our citizens, I implore you to provide the Independent Ethics Commission with powers to investigate anonymous complaints and an enforcement standard of intentionally and knowingly rather than corruptly misusing public office for private gain. And both reforms should also be precursor to others, ultimately ensuring the strongest possible accountability to the public. Please don't count on politicians from across the street to do your job.
Excuse me, that's three minutes.
You have the power and the public mandate to restore public confidence in our local government, and I encourage you to take that mandate and use that power now.
Thank you, Peter. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson. He'll be followed by Ben Wilcox.
Name and address, please, Mr. Jackson.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff.
Okay.
Three things.
All right.
Commissioner Miller, I've talked quite often with the city attorney, and he made it very clear, the city attorney does not represent the citizens. His first priority is to protect your rear ends. We pay the bill, but he's protecting you. When Scott, living in the Cuntin County, but wants to live in the, wants to run for the City Commission, who does he turn to? Did we see Mr. Shelley come protect the public? No, he protected Scott Maddox. We have three issues we're talking about. In the very beginning, this commission has been opposed to ethics. They fought us all the way, and only after the citizens rebelled did we get an ethics ordinance. Unfortunately, it was written by, I turned in one that was significantly stronger, but unfortunately, it was written by the city attorney, whose sole goal was to protect your fanny. The administrative hearing officer, right, let me back up. First of all, sworn statements, if you want people to come forward to put their job on the line, it has to be done in secrecy. Sorry, it just has to be. You guys are pushing, let's make them come out in public and state. Well, not everyone is as willing to come out and speak publicly as I am about corruption in City Hall. We have to have these statements and do a way, do not accept this sworn statements, number one. Secondly, Scott's trying to pull a fast one. Yeah, 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 let's say corporate intent. Scott knows it's impossible to prove corrupt intent, excuse me, than knowing and intentionally doing something. Yeah, if you went into the bank and you took the money, you knowingly did that, intentionally did that. Did you corruptly intend to go in the bank and do this? You'll never be able to prove that. So, we have to leave it with knowing and intently. Third is the administrative hearing officer. We don't need to get the state involved. We're going to have an Ethics Commission, the Ethics Board. They can do the investigation, they can have the ruling. We don't need to delay, delay, delay on these ethics investigations. So, those are three points, and I just can't overemphasize how difficult it's been to get the ethics ordinance up and going, and it's directly because of this commission's fighting us every step of the way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jackson. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Ben Wilcox, and then Greg Marr. And Mr. Marr will be the last speaker on this public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank the members of the commission. I'm Ben Wilcox with Citizens for Ethics Reform, along with Catherine Baer, Peter Butzine, and Marilyn Wills. First of all, I want to just thank you for considering this ordinance. I think it would definitely strengthen the city's ethics code. I want to recognize your Ethics Board Chair, Richard Herring, and your Ethics Officer, Julie Meadows-Keeffe. They were instrumental in putting forward the recommendations that are part of this code you're considering today. I do want to echo a little bit of what Peter Butzine said about requiring the proof of corrupt intent rather than just intent. Proving corrupt intent is very difficult, and a lot of times, what you have to do is you have to prove quid pro quo, you know, this for that. And so, unfortunately, to use a bad, an unfortunate example, in the case of the football tickets, you would have to prove that, you know, the city employee promised something in return for the football tickets. Really, you know, when we see corruption, a lot of times, you know, it's not quid pro quo, it's just trying to build a cozy, you know, relationship with a city official. So, I would just urge you to go back to a standard, a lower standard of proof in just having to prove intent. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Greg Marr.
Greg.
I don't think I see Mr. Marr. He was here earlier, obviously, and if that, if he is not here, then there are no further speakers on this particular item.
Okay, is there a motion? Hello? Is there a motion?
I just have a comment, if I could, Mr. Mayor, per time. You wouldn't know it from reading the newspaper article that resulted in it, but the question I asked on the intent was, what was the state law? And I was told that the wording that we adopted was the wording in state law. So, that was where my comments lied. And of course, at that meeting, we adopted all the recommendations of the Independent Ethics Board, and then went further and adopted additional ones that Commissioner Ziffer brought forward. The only change we made was one word to comply with state law, and we got a very different response and an article afterwards based on that, which I thought was unfair and disingenuous. But that's why...
These days.
Yeah, that was why my discussion on that one-word standard.
I have a question.
Commissioner Ziffer.
And it's in reference to the editorial that was submitted by Mike Sittig at the League of Cities. We are mirroring, for the most part, the Florida Commission on Ethics laws, correct?
That's correct.
And his argument was, if there's an ethical violation potentially by any one of us, that that could be filed at the state level, too. So, what, I guess I'm asking, and I'm the one that brought this up, but after reading the argument, I'm asking the question, are we actually ending up paying for two different, paying for the same thing twice? That was the argument, that potentially these services are already offered to the state if you wanted to file an ethics complaint.
Well, the...
And this may be for somebody else on my commission, I'm just asking.
Right. The...
And I have a question for Julie.
The misuse of position provisions in section, proposed section two dash six are significantly the same as the state law. There are, in fact, a couple of specifics within it that make it more stringent, but by and large, the, that position, I mean, that ordinance does follow the major provisions of state law. There's always been the issue of whether or not, if it is identical or close to, does a person in elected office who is subject of charge potentially have to have two complaints pending, and whether or not, one, the local board at that time would defer to the state or not.
Well, we built that in this, didn't we? If the, in a complaint, the same complaint is filed on the state level and here in the local level, I think we built into this that it would defer to the state, as I recall.
Yeah, we do have that in the proposed ordinance.
And I have a question for Julie.
What I'd like to do, commissioners, is get a motion on the floor, because we are into discussion and debate. We've got to dispose of this one way or the other this evening, so if we could...
Well, I'll make a motion for discussion, then.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second for discussion. Commissioner Ziffer.
Okay. It's built into it that if there's a, if the same violation is filed for both state, both for state, and then it's also filed locally, we defer to state...
Yes, we defer.
Until such time as it's resolved.
Until it's resolved, so that the ordinance provides that if you have something filed at the law enforcement, or if it's filed at the State Ethics Commission, it would be deferred by this local Ethics Board until it is resolved in those separate forms.
Okay. Julie, I have a question regarding anonymous complaints. We have a hotline, correct?
You are correct. It's eight nine one eighty-eight thirteen.
Okay.
Anyone that wants to write that down.
So, someone has the availability to call the hotline and leave a complaint, and how does that work?
Okay, so, the way that that works currently is that it is set up as a voicemail, so typically, I do not answer the phone. That enhances the anonymous nature of it, and the caller gets an instruction that they can leave as little or as much information as they would like on that. And my process is, I ask if they want to be contacted back. They have all kinds of different options, so I would say it's sort of like Crime Stoppers. What happens with those complaints is they are noted on a spreadsheet every month, and the board reviews all of those incoming complaints, whether they're anonymous or whether there's a name attached to them. The confusing part, I think to some, has been the role of anonymous complaints in this proposed ordinance. Under this proposed ordinance, anonymous complaints would still be accepted. The hotline would work in an identical manner. We would still be able to get anonymous complaints in the mail with no return address on them. The only addition or enhancement that's before you all this evening is that the board would only be able to discipline, to impose a sanction based on a sworn complaint. Okay? Now, we have anonymous complaints that could ostensibly result in a sanction. The thing that gets skipped over sometimes in this discussion that I feel is urgent to clarify is the board received an advisory opinion from its outside counsel, Mr. Carrington, that states that the board has the authority to self-initiate complaints. So, if an anonymous complaint comes before the board and the board is concerned about that issue, the board can convene an executive session and discuss that matter. The board can then self-initiate that complaint, and the board would be the complainant. So, that way, if one of you all or a successor has an issue, you're able to face the accuser, and in this case, the board would simply step into the shoes of the complainant. That is the only change.
So, there's still the opportunity for an anonymous complaint?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Miller? Question? For Julie?
So, I'm assuming this mirrors the state's process?
No, ma'am. The state's process is different in that the State Ethics Commission will not accept anonymous complaints. Unless you are willing to sign your name and have it notarized, they will not accept your complaint. Now, there are some statutory carve-outs for people like state attorneys, U.S. attorneys, that they can send complaints directly over to the Florida Ethics Commission. Our board wrote to the executive director of the Florida Commission on Ethics and asked, hey, can we forward this matter to you? We did not have jurisdiction over that matter, and the Florida Commission on Ethics wrote back and said, no, local ethics boards aren't included in that statutory group of folks that can send it over. So, to answer your question, Commissioner Miller, the Commission on Ethics will not accept any anonymous complaints.
And can they self-initiate?
They may not.
So, in that case, this proposed ordinance would be stronger than state law?
Yeah.
Because the Ethics Board, the Independent Ethics Board, can choose to self-initiate a complaint?
Yes, you are right, Commissioner Maddox, and I know, Commissioner Ziffer, you had asked about how this process is different than the state process, and under Florida statute, municipalities and counties can adopt stricter standards. And so, that's what we're doing, and that's, if you want to call it a value add, that's what this board is offering, that perhaps there was some concern about the editorial saying they couldn't see the value or what extra service it would provide to citizens. This does that. It gives them additional methods to communicate complaints.
Thank you, Julie. And I guess, you know, I feel comfortable now that we are moving forward with the wishes of the Ethics Board and the recommendations that were made by that board. I mean, we, I don't know that we can serve two masters, so I would hope that at some point, there would be a merging of the minds and of the effort, so that when recommendations come to us from those that were responsible for getting the issue on the ballot and helping to get it passed, and now those that are responsible for implementing it, there's some agreement, there's somewhere, because, you know, we can't be put in a position where we're serving two masters. And so, I'm comfortable with where we are now. If in the future, there are changes that need to be made, you know, to address, Peter, the issues that you all have brought up, that you would work with the board and have those come to the commission from the board, so that we know who we're working with in that respect. And I'll still be around, I hope. Hope you all don't get rid of me.
If I get a permission to do it, I suppose.
If I do it for you, Pete, I'll have to open it up for everybody else. But, so, is there any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Maddox?
I just want to add one thing, that this board has supported the formation of the Independent Ethics Office, that I personally voted for the Ethics Officer to be an appointed official, which did not carry the day, but I voted for the Ethics Officer to be an appointed official on the same level as our city attorney, city auditor, and treasurer clerk, for the record.
As did I.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
We got a second part to this.
We, the vote was on ordinance number seventeen dash oh dash forty-five. This is a second ordinance that would make a change in our charter in terms of the appointee by the public defender, and we need to vote on that also.
I'll move that option, too.
The seconded, were moved by Commissioner Ziffer, seconded by Commissioner Ziffer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. That is all of the public hearings that we had to take care of. That takes us back, I think, Mr. City Manager, to, is it 1301?
Yes, sir.
Item 1301.
We never finished the...
1102.
The city attorney.
We got to go back to 12.
Oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry. 1102. City Attorney.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Portem, if I could.
Commissioner Maddox?
The...
Right now, where we are, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox, just for the public certification, right now where we are, Ms. Jackson has been appointed as the interim city attorney. And so, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. I am not in favor of a headhunter, even though we're requiring that in the city manager search. I'm not in favor of a lengthy process. I have found one flaw, in my opinion, in the process, and that's what I would like to address. The, in the minimum qualifications, there is a requirement for eight years' legal experience in local government. It's to be, have a Juris Doctorate degree and membership in the Florida bar and eight years of legal experience in local government-related law. So to me, because I'm, this is my profession, that is, local government law, you could practice other kinds of law and still be good at local government law and learn that. That's like saying if you are a very talented heart surgeon, that you would not be qualified to be a pediatrician. If you are an electrical engineer for NASA or Boeing or Honeywell or Siemens, you could not be an electrical engineer at Portum Power Plant. Under these requirements, it would, Lawrence Tribe, Harvard professor and renowned lawyer would not be qualified to, and would be deemed unqualified if he applied to be a city attorney. The same with Barry Richards here in the state of Florida, many of you know, would not be qualified to be a city attorney. So the only, the policy, the only thing that I would change of the policy would be to take that eight years of legal experience in local government-related law and change that to, and I don't know where HR, right back there, change that to something that says eight years of legal experience in local government law or related or higher field or something along those lines that will allow people that are in the private sector that have not done local government law but could be fully qualified to practice local government law would not be precluded. We make that change, advertise to the same folks that we advertised before, have that come back in a short period that should not take longer than, I guess, 30 days, and then make a decision. We'll know then if we get a much bigger pool of applicants, if we do not get a much bigger pool of applicants. I mean, I think the decision can end up the same way either way, but that way, there will be no holes in the process that I can think of.
Could you summarize?
I just did. But Commissioner Ziffer, then I'll...
Can I add? I'd like to give a little bit longer. I think 60 days might be appropriate, simply because I think there's an opportunity to just spend a little bit more time. And it's still, it's a pretty short fuse, but I am in total agreement. Quite frankly, I don't think any of us saw what the qualification requirements were before this thing started. And so when I saw that after the fact, I thought that was a bit restrictive, too. So I agree with you, Commissioner Maddox, if you can make that in a motion.
If it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I will. And I want to acknowledge, you're correct, Commissioner Richardson, that if we had objections to the process, we should have brought it up before. And I'm acknowledging that I did not look at the minimum qualifications, and I should have, in the agenda item. I did not look at it until I saw the pool of applicants. So that is derelict on my part. So I move that we re-advertise, changing the language of eight years, the requirement of eight years' legal experience in local government law to eight years' experience, legal experience in, you know, have our HR folks come up with the right wording for local government-related law or comparable levels of expertise.
Mr. Mayor.
And we re-advertise, come back in 60 days, and for a final decision.
Got it. There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Richardson?
Ma'am.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
On that point, just so the commissions inform, we've used that same language every time we filled an assistant city attorney position.
Yeah.
That job description has three years' local government law. The senior assistant attorney position has five years of local government law, same language. The deputy has six years. So in the past, we have used that so, because we know what we're talking about. I'm concerned if we want to do away with that, you can, and you can certainly change that, if you don't specify, because HR is not going to be much of a help on this. HR is not versed in all areas of relating law. Somehow, I am assuming you don't want somebody spending in the public defender's office, a state attorney's office, for eight years to be qualified. But I don't know beyond what we have said and used, and it has actually worked fine in terms of not producing any small number of applicants for other positions in our We can certainly work with HR to try to develop that, but to a large degree, it is totally a judgment call as to what might relate to local government law and what might not.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm pointing on that. If you had someone with eight years' experience as general counsel for the old Department of Community Affairs, if you had someone with eight years' experience as general counsel of the Public Employees Relations Commission, if you had someone for eight years of experience for the public, for the Utility Regulating Commission, or any number of areas that mirror what the city government does, and/or for an assistant city attorney, if you had someone with eight years' experience, is Nancy Lanahan qualified to be an assistant city attorney over land use? Well, yes. I would venture that, I'm not going to say how many years' experience she has in land use, and I would venture to say her billable hour is quite high. She certainly would be qualified to be an assistant city attorney over land use. So I just didn't want to preclude applicants without, inadvertently. Now, when it comes back, we still make a judgment call if their level of expertise is what is needed for a city attorney or if we're better off with someone with pure municipal experience. But my thought is to cast the net a little wider as far as eliminating people based on specifics in the application.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, because I'm perplexed as to why you would want to, Commissioner Maddox, lower the qualifications for a position when we've got an individual who is well beyond what we're asking for. I've never, I've never seen a situation where you want to lower your requirement and go outside of, I mean, you know, I'm a psychologist by training, and if somebody was looking for a psychologist, I don't think that they would say, well, let's lower the criteria so that we can get a, maybe a social worker or a political scientist. I mean, you want somebody who has done the work and they've shown a competence in that area. And then I'm not comfortable with how this is being done on the fly and, you know, we'll come back with some language and maybe, if, again, if what we've got has worked, then let's stay with it. I mean, we had three people that met the qualifications that are called for now. We had three. I, I mean, I, you all know where I am. I would agree to the 60-day advertising for a second time, but not lowering the qualifications for a position that we've had for years and that has worked for this city and brought us people like Lou Shelley and Jim English and Cassandra Jackson and the phenomenal staff that we have now in the city attorney's office. I just couldn't agree to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Maddox.
Yeah, I'm on point, Commissioner Ziffer.
Sure.
I apologize if that's okay. Just on point, Commissioner Richardson, I'm suggesting the opposite, not lowering it, raising it. Using your example, would you agree that a clinical psychologist with two degrees from Harvard and a degree from Yale would be qualified? What if the opening said, this person, to be a guidance counselor dealing with psychology in a high school, only had to have been a guidance counselor for eight years? So certainly, the person at Harvard with the two degrees who dealt with very complex issues could handle being a guidance counselor. Maybe, maybe not, but certainly, a heart surgeon could handle being a pediatrician. I can tell you that someone that has done complex litigation, dealing with government, could handle municipal law. I mean, they can do that. So it is not a lowering, it's an expanding to allow people that may be higher qualified to apply. In my opinion, the, of the three qualified, and it's a good example that you brought back, we had three qualified folks, according to our folks, no, I think we had two qualified. I do not think we had three qualified candidates in the ones we interviewed. In my opinion, we had two, not three. So to me, this is expanding it, it's not tightening, it's not, it's not making it lower, it's making it higher.
Commissioner Ziffer?
Yeah, earlier, we had a significant number of the staff from the city attorney's office stand, and it was a lot of people. I guess for me, we have a staff large enough where there are lots of people, different levels of expertise in different areas. So the city attorney not only had, might need municipal government or local government experience, but the management skills and how to run an office and how to operate that, that's important to me, too. So I'm going to be supportive of Commissioner Maddox's recommendation.
Great. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second. I'll just offer my thought on the motion. One, I see why my colleague is a lawyer, teaches you to argue all sides of an argument. This is nothing short of a reduction in the qualifications for the position of a city attorney, likely because the candidate pool didn't result in the reduced level of applicant that the commission majority seems to be looking for. The city attorney, as in any discipline, it is acceptable that you would look for people with demonstrated experience within a particular discipline. Eight years is not so prohibitive. We are, again, talking about the person who leads the legal office for what is the eighth largest city in the state of Florida, in the capital city. If, I heard names bandied about of other attorneys who would be qualified, had they, I'm sure my fellow of them that they're interested, or any of them that they're interested in this position, I think it is wholly acceptable. And I think we've heard it also expressed by the sitting and retiring city attorney, that there be conditions, that there be bookends, that there be expectations that we will put on the office for the person who's going to lead municipal, the municipal legal department for this government. Now, I've heard things in a, I mean, I've seen conditions where you've seen candidates and you say, oh, we need to increase, we need to increase the level of vetting and scrutiny on a position. I have not seen where you've had a higher level of screening, a higher level of vetting that has produced a set of candidates that meet that higher level of vetting, one in one case, in my opinion, eminently qualified. And then the group comes back and says, we want to lessen that, remove any requirement for municipal legal experience so that we can expand the pool. It's creative bunch. I get, I get the, I get, I can count. It's not calculus, it's arithmetic. So we're going to lose this one as well. But there's some valuable lessons in this debate, some valuable lessons in this argument, and I hope folks will take note.
Mayor?
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. Well, I have two, I feel compelled to give two examples of why I feel that there needs to be a broader view of this job. And one is the county's land use attorney. The county's land use attorney interned under Jim English in our office, but when she applied for a job, she did not qualify for the job. And so she went across the street and she applied, and she was hired there. And I think she's doing an exceptionally good job. The other thing is, going back to Ms. Lanahan, and, you know, if she were to apply for this job, I would certainly want to have the opportunity to look at that as a resume. And if you just write the rules so that none of these folks are qualified, then I don't see how you can say that it doesn't narrow the pool. Ultimately, hopefully, ultimately, we'll all be sitting down, having the same discussion again, and we may come up with the same conclusion that the two of you have come to. But with me, I will at least have felt that I've met the community standard and the community expectation that we thoroughly, thoroughly consider this in, from every angle. And for that reason, I agree with Commissioner Maddox.
Commissioner Richardson? You know, I guess what's disconcerting to me is that when Ms. Jackson came to the city of Tallahassee, there were a set of rules in place. And the rules said, if you do these things, it makes you qualified to be city attorney, that you have eight years' experience, that you be bar certified, whatever all the other criteria are. And she has diligently worked towards meeting those criteria, even going above and beyond to get a certification that only 7% of municipal attorneys in the state of Florida hold. Went above and beyond, has attended trainings and seminars, preparing herself for the day when she met the criteria. Now, when she's there, has interviewed for the position, was clearly head and shoulders above the other two candidates. Now we say, oh, we're going to change the criteria, we're going to open it up and let someone with land use experience apply. You know, we're sorry that, you know, when you came in, you understood what the rules were, and you abided by those rules, and you worked towards the day when you could assume that position. What does that say to Cassandra, that all of a sudden now, we want to change the rules on the fly? We don't even know what the language is. We don't know, we don't know how this will pan out. I, I, guys, I just don't understand it. I'm flabbergasted by this. I mean, this, this reeks to me of a city manager in training. It's what it reeks to me at this, on this night.
Commissioners, there is a motion and a second on the item. All those in favor, let it be numbered.
Close on the motion, if I could.
Sure. Commissioner Maddox?
First of all, I try to make decisions on a process, not about personalities. So just in response to, if Mrs. Jackson is as qualified as we all believe that she is, then additional applicants will not matter, and she will shine in that process. I'm bad tonight with my analogies. I'm going to try one more. This is as if we had an application for a high school football coach, and we disallowed NFL football coaches. So an NFL coach, Bill Belichick, wants to coach at Leon High, and we say, no, you have to have eight years' experience, recently continual as a high school coach, and you don't have that, so you can't coach at Leon High. That's analogous. There are much more intricate levels of the law than municipal law. I don't know if there's any other applicants that will come in based on this, but we ought to be able to answer the question, we ought to be able to defend our process. And I believe at the end of this, we'll have qualified candidates, we already have a qualified candidate, and the most qualified will shine through and we'll make a decision. and we'll make a decision.
There's a motion and a second on the item. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. No. Motion passes three to two. Commissioners, we are now on item, introduction of ordinances, city attorney.
Introduction of item, of ordinance number eighteen dash O dash O seven. This is item number twelve point zero one. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for the joint meeting of the city commission and Leon County Board of County Commissions on February twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen, at six p.m. in the county chambers in Leon County Courthouse. The title of the ordinance is, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee Adopting Small Scale Amendments to the Twenty Thirty Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan. Item number twelve point zero two is ordinance number eighteen dash O dash O eight. The first and only public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for February twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, at six p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers and City Hall. The title of the ordinance reads, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee Amending Chapter Ten, Zoning of the Tallahassee Land Development Code, Amending Development Standards and the Development Standards in General Commercial, that is C two zoning district. Item number twelve point zero three is ordinance number eighteen dash O dash O nine. The first and only public hearing for this proposed ordinance is also February twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, at six p.m. in the city commission chambers. Title of that ordinance, eighteen point zero, eighteen dash zero dash O nine is, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, Amending Section Six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to Annex Within the Corporate Area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida. Upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section one, chapter one seventy one point zero four four, Florida statutes. Item number twelve point zero four is ordinance eighteen dash Z dash zero two. The first and only public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for the joint meeting of the city commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners on February twenty seventh, at six p.m. in the county commission chambers. Title of eighteen dash Z dash zero two is, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida Designating and Including Additional Territory As and In Commercial Parkway, that is CP, on the Official Zoning Map of the City of Tallahassee. Item number fifteen, number twelve point zero five, it's ordinance number eighteen dash Z dash zero three. The first and only public hearings of this ordinance, proposed ordinance, is scheduled for the joint meeting of the city commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners on February twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen, at six p.m. in the county board of county commission chambers. The title of eighteen dash Z dash zero three is, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida Designating and Including Additional Territory As and In General Commercial, that is C two, on the Official Zoning Map of the City of Tallahassee. Item number twelve point zero six, it's ordinance number eighteen dash Z dash zero four. First and only public hearing, I'm sorry, the first public hearing scheduled for this ordinance is scheduled, joint meeting of the city commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners on February twenty eighth, at six p.m. in the chambers of Leon County Board of County Commission. There will be a second and final public hearing on eighteen dash Z dash zero four, and that hearing will be scheduled for March twenty first, two thousand eighteen, at six p.m. in the City of Tallahassee chambers. The title of that particular ordinance, eighteen dash Z dash zero four, is, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee Designating and Including Additional Territory As and In Government Operational One, that is G O one, on the Official Zoning Map of the City of Tallahassee. Finally, we have item number twelve point zero seven. It's ordinance number eighteen dash Z dash zero six. The first and only public hearing is for this ordinance is scheduled for February twenty eighth, at six p.m. in these chambers. The title of this ordinance is, An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee Designating and Including Additional Territory As and In Residential Preservation Two, that is R P two, on the Official Zoning Map of the City of Tallahassee. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we deem introduced items number twelve point zero one through twelve point zero seven.
Mr. Mayor.
One question for the, for the city attorney. I believe on twelve oh six, that first public hearing, I may have misheard it, but that first public hearing is February twenty seventh, right? I want to be sure we get that right.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No objections. Please show those items introduced.
I have a question.
Commissioner.
We have taken, I noticed that one of these is to adopt the comp plan amendments, the small scale amendments. And my question is really general. Lately, we've taken to introducing ordinances at the same time, we, the entire comprehensive plan process is taken to introducing the comprehensive plan amendment and taking it through public hearings and the whole process, in companionship with a, with an ordinance that changes the zoning. The zone change is a quasi judicial issue. The comp plan is not. So how does that, how do we apply that to our interactions with the public on the comp plan amendment? The fact that it's joined by that quasi judicial zoning change?
The, the, the general comp plan amendment are not going to be deemed to be quasi judicial. It's the zoning changes that will be. But since we're doing many of these at the same time, it, it, you're going to have a mixture of both of these hearings.
Well, I'm not talking about these hearings specifically. I'm talking about in the comprehensive planning, I mean, right now, if anybody comments to us in our office on any of these particular issues here, these seven, we will treat it as quasi judicial.
Right.
But we are also, my question is general about the comprehensive planning process, because at the same time out there, we're going through a comprehensive planning process.
Right.
And in that process, there is an attached zoning ordinance with it. And so I'm unclear about how we're supposed to treat anyone who calls us related to the comprehensive plan change itself, amendment itself.
I understand your question, and we'll certainly look at it and talk to the land use people about it. I think we have treated that, when we've had a mixture always, as everything quasi judicial.
Okay, thank you.
All right, those items are introduced without objection. Commissioners, we're now on to the policy formation, item thirteen point zero one, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, the Zimmer Development Company that you heard from earlier tonight approached the city to exchange land and right-of-way construction services in the area of Mosley, Stern Street, where the project is, again, that you heard of earlier. This agenda item outlines the exchange of several city properties for property owned or controlled by Zimmer Development Company and their assumption of the right-of-way construction cost. Wayne Titter is here to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Move acceptance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Three, zero.
It's three, three, zero.
Two missing in chamber.
Yeah, right. Three, zero. Sorry, with Commissioners Maddox and Mayor Gillum being out of the chamber.
Could I? Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Miller.
I wanted to ask staff, you all have been working with the Sterns-Mosley condominiums all through this process, I'm assuming, because none of them are here. And I think that Mr. Zimmer, or someone mentioned Jerry Lindsay also, right?
That is correct. Before they even submitted anything to the city of Tallahassee, they went directly to the neighborhood groups that were in discussions when we had the sale of the land just next door to it. The developers done an extremely incredible, nice job working with those neighborhood folks to work out a positive solution for all of us.
Good. Thank you, and thank them, too, if they're still here.
Commissioners Ziffer.
Nope.
Okay, I thought you had a, had a question. Is, are there any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Was there a motion?
Yeah, I know.
I believe you passed that one, three, none. Three, zero with the other two out of chambers.
We're on three, thirteen point zero two. Mr. Chair, Mr. Manager.
Thirteen oh two is a good news item.
Move acceptance.
Second.
Motion and a second.
We'll all celebrate.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three, zero, with Commissioner Maddox and Mayor Gillum out of the chamber. Thirteen point oh three.
This agenda item recommends approval of an MOU between the city and the county to establish roles and responsibilities.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, with Commissioner Maddox and Mayor Gillum being out of the chamber. Item thirteen point oh four, the public safety update.
I'll be brief on this, but I would like to hit a couple of highlights. Deputy Chief Forseth is here to answer questions, if you have any. We've got a full report in your agenda material that highlights activities since the last time you were updated. As you know, crime in two thousand seventeen, year over years, down about thirteen percent, so the positive trend. I would like to make note that there is a top ten list that you have heard of, that's been developed recently. And since you were last updated, five of the individuals on that top ten list have been arrested, which I think shows good progress. Now, of course, there's five more on the list, so it remains as the top ten list. I think that's notable. It's in your agenda material. If you would like more information, Deputy Chief Forseth is here to provide that to you.
Good evening. Just gave you a quick overview of kind of our top ten, which is also our city-county focused subjects. And as you know, we continue to focus on identifying individuals within our community that continue to commit crime, especially those that pose a risk to our citizens by the virtue of the crimes they do commit. Since this inception, we started this initiative around August, two thousand seventeen, and we've had about twenty-three individuals that we've had on the list rotate on and off the list since that time. Some of those individuals are in the agenda, agenda item, but just for two thousand eighteen, we've also had additional three individuals that we have on that list that have been arrested, and additional three that we have outstanding warrants on that we're continuing to look for at this time. And we've actually had a couple that probably were close to be on the list, but lucky for us, they've moved out of town. So.
Any, any questions for the chief? Oh, were you done?
I can, I can touch on, okay, significant cases real quick. Just briefly, just Speed's Grocery. It's one of those areas within the Bond community, community that we've been focusing on for several months now, dating back to October, two thousand sixteen. We've done three search warrants at Speed's Grocery. Again, we've made several arrests back on this latest one in, on January fifth. Narcotics, paraphernalia, cocaine, the whatnot was found inside the business itself. Since that time, we've actually had one of the individuals that we've arrested, probably has bonded out. He's been rearrested again off a traffic stop. So we're continuing to work with our partner agencies, alcohol, beverages and tobacco, and as well, we've also started initiative to do the nuisance of payment on Speed's Grocery. So.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
And, and chief, isn't there a public safety collective initiative coming up? It seemed like I read that somewhere.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, we have, starting Monday, February fifth, Griffin Heights, Neighborhood Blitz, and that involves the city departments, and they'll be there through that entire week, working on issues that were brought forward during the assessment period. And then that following Tuesday night, we will kick off the Bond Community Initiative, NPSI. That'll be the Smith Williams Service Center Annex on Pasco Street at six p.m. And we'll have, I know the PD will have both our cop squad and community relations unit down there to answer your questions for the community members. And then February seventeenth, we'll actually start our Greater Bond Community Assessment.
Okay, great. Any more questions for the chief? Chief, thank you all for all that you're doing. It's making a difference in our community. And I know the numbers are going to change this year, and we won't have that dubious distinction that we've been saddled with over the last couple of years. And, and all of us, wherever we live in this city, thanks to your efforts and, and the people that you work with, will feel as safe as we ever have. So we thank you for that effort.
Thank you, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you for the good news.
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Commissioners, are, is there anything for the order?
We do have un-agenda speakers.
Oh, we do?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Okay.
Yes, we do have two speakers. If you want to go ahead and take those, the first of those is Harry Brown. He'll be followed by Erwin Jackson.
Oh.
That's what we're trying to get us. Mr. Brown.
Okay. Mr. Brown? Can you give us your name and address for the record, please? You'll have three minutes. Good evening.
As you all know, this is my Bible.
Yeah.
I'm here to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God, as I have done over the years.
Name and address. Your name and address.
I'm Harry Brown, and I reside at fifty-four thirty-one Crump Road, Tallahassee, three two three zero nine. First, I would like to start by saying to you, Nancy, that you have done a mighty noble thing by getting away from this corrupt city commission. This commission has become nationally known for its corruption and wrongdoing. It's no wonder few people want to apply for legal counsel to take Lou Shelley's place. Even Lou knows that Ms. Jackson, whom he recommended, would be instrumental in helping this government return to its right footing. She would certainly bring great ethics and high moral character back where it is very much needed. Lou Shelley, you did not help the legal office with that distinction. With your counsel, Lou, you helped get this city nationally known for its corruption by not giving good counsel. From what I alone experienced with you, thank God you are leaving so others can get better counsel than you gave the current commission. Gil Ziffer, even with the negative experience I had with you, my hat is off to you for passing the baton on to Mr. Bill Moffett to run for mayor in your place. In my experience with Mr. Moffett, I found him to be a man of high moral character. He realizes what this city needs. Mr. Moffett and others realize that this city with FBI agents surrounding it like vultures on a killing field, needs to help and need immediately to get it turned around. And it will take a long time to get it right again with the messy sins. Thanks, Mr. Moffett, for wanting to contribute your effort to upright this sinking ship. Thanks for the likes of this present commission. Now, Curtis.
Yes, sir.
You tried to downplay what Lou Shelley said to me when you said, if Lou said that to you, I was not here when he said it. I hope you're smart enough, Curtis, to know that when Lou called me a boy, he said it to all men of color. Before you warmed your seat on the commission, you were passing out kudos to Anita Favors, who is the most despicable woman I have ever met. She gave Scott Maddox a plethora of lies to read about me from this day. This is, this was after she placed her hand down in my shirt to look at a necklace I was wearing. Her action caused me to join the Me Too movement after hearing of Terry Crews's encounter in Hollywood. If I had done that to any woman or even her.
Excuse me, your time's expired.
I would have been charged with sexual harassment. Curtis, your horrific history preceded you to this commission. Birds of a feather.
Flock together. Thank you, Harry.
Okay.
Your time is up.
Best.
Time is up, Mr. Brown.
God is watching us. She took a secular song to.
Your time is up, Mr. Brown.
The biblical truth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson.
And then Curtis Baines. And as, Curtis Baines is the last speaker that I have.
All right. Question, when are we going to be called back? I put in my order, my slip to speak on eleven point oh two. We did our thirty minutes. They said, we'll call you later. And it's certainly later, and I'd like to have an opportunity to talk about eleven point oh two, even though you've gone ahead and voted for it. I've been here since four o'clock waiting to talk on eleven.
Name and address. Name and address for the record, Mr. Jackson, you have three minutes.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, Tallahassee, Truth Teller, thirteen forty-one, Jackson, Jackson Bluff. Now, my question is, am I speaking on eleven point oh two?
You have three minutes in this portion of the meeting to speak on eleven oh two and any other topic that you wish.
No, 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 no. I put in an app, I filled up paperwork.
Your time is running.
Speak on eleven point oh two. I should have an opportunity to speak on eleven point oh two. I haven't had that. I also put in an opportunity to speak on unagended speakers.
And that's where we are now.
That's two topics.
That's where we are now.
I'd like to speak on eleven point oh two.
We had thirty minutes for those speakers. We went over that thirty minute period of time. We are now at unagended.
Yeah, well, here's what the problem is, Curtis.
You probably have about thirty seconds left.
The state law says, state law says that before you vote, you have to give the citizens an opportunity to speak on that issue prior to your vote. Why do you want citizens to come in here, sit here, watch you vote, and not give us an opportunity to speak? Now, we're going to have a discussion on this. This is the second time this has happened to me. Okay, you have violated your own policy. Why don't we ask the city attorney? He's sat there being quiet. He violated his own policy and state law by not allowing citizens to come up here and speak before your vote on this issue about the attorney, the city attorney. No one is allowed it. How about another thing? I want copies of all the names of the citizens who signed up to speak on eleven point oh two but were denied by this commission.
They left.
I know they left. After you vote, do you think many of them are going to hang around?
We have a thirty minute time limit.
The thirty minute provision is our commission policy.
You don't get a thirty minute time limit. The state law doesn't give you thirty minutes. That's my point. You have to give a citizen, everyone in here, an opportunity to speak, and if it takes you two hours, that's a problem that's your problem, not ours. I'm sitting out here also for two hours. You have to give me an opportunity and the other people who are sitting out here an opportunity to speak before you vote. You said, oh, we're only going to give the citizens thirty minutes.
Do you have a clock running?
If there's an hour's worth of people.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
You're going to have to wait for them.
Pardon? You have thirty seconds remaining.
Thirty seconds?
Yes, sir.
I'll have my attorney get in touch with you. I appreciate this opportunity. This is a clear violation of state law and your own personal ordinance. We also had the same problem. Our mayor did that when we were here, wasn't talking about Fernandez. What he do then? We were going to have thirty people show up. I was told by the acting manager.
Excuse me, your time's expired.
Wait until, okay, the unagended portion, we waited, and guess what? You went ahead and voted before we could speak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Commissioners Zipper?
Mayor, would, can we give him the three minutes?
No, I don't want to set that precedent, Commissioners Zipper, not at this point.
I don't think the clock started. Did the clock actually start?
The clock had started. He had three minutes to speak on unagended speakers. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Curtis Baines.
As Mr. Baines comes forward, I'd like to.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the city attorney to, if your office could review and make sure that our speaking procedures are in accordance with case law and state law so that we follow the letter of the law.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I'd like to make short of word on that later.
Mr. Baines, name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Curtis Baines, thirteen twenty-three East Tennessee Street. My purpose here is, this evening is to speak on an issue that's tangentially related to eleven point oh two regarding your search for your appointed officers.
Mr. Jackson, would you not pass out items to the commission that way? Would you please come and collect your, whatever that was? Would you please collect that? Don't, don't do that. We're going to, we're making, we're going to have order in this chamber.
You want me to pass?
No, sir, no, sir. I would like for you to, I would like for you to.
I can meet with you at the end of the meeting, and I can take those materials.
At the end of the meeting?
It's the government's sunshine man.
We would like for you to give them to our treasurer clerk if you want, at the end of the meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you, treasurer clerk. Sir.
Mr. Baines, your time, we'll restart.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question here is whether you should broaden your search process or rely upon past practices as precedence. We've kind of hit around the, around the point, and I don't know, I don't know that I represent anyone out in the community, and I don't know who you've spoken to in the community who's expressed these concerns, but if it would help, what I would simply say is that your past practices have not been enough. And I think that's why people in the community are demanding that you do more, that you go beyond what you've done in the past to ensure that you have an intellectually honest, comprehensive search for these appointed officials. Whenever an organization comes under suspicion, such as that as the city has, it diminishes the reputation of the city, it diminishes the reputation of everyone who works for the city. It may not, it may not be deserved, it may not be fair, it may be contrary to everything you know or understand or think you know about the city and your organization, but it's tarnished nevertheless. You do not need me to remind you that yours is not a job, it's a duty. And your duty is to the city and the public and the community and not to an individual and not to one person. Community passion may be high, but it does not relieve you of that duty. It cannot be a process for you to show that you've done something just so you can appoint someone from inside. It has to be an honest search. This, I believe, has already compromised your search in the city attorney position, regardless of who you, who you appoint in the future. Moving the city forward begins here with you. You set the standards, you set the tone, you set the agenda. You can make no greater public policy decision than how you choose to staff the organization for which you are responsible. For that reason, take your time and conduct a comprehensive, intellectually honest search for your next appointed officials. Your appointed officials should have a constituency that's on this dais, not out here in the community. They work for you. When you have sufficient information, in the interest of the city and the community, do your duty by making the best decision you can.
Thank you, Mr. Baines.
Thank you, Curtis.
Is there anything for the good of the order, Commissioners? Commissioner Maddox?
I know we, we had a little event earlier, but I just wanted to, again, publicly on television, thank Lou Shelley for an outstanding job and for service well above and beyond the call of duty for the citizens of Tallahassee. Thank you for caring about not only the legal profession and what you do in the city attorney's office, but the well-being of all of us, especially the least among us. Thank you, sir, for a job well done.
Thank you, Lou.
I have passed out to you all the flyer for the Capital City Senior Games. I had the pleasure of being there for the lighting of the torch and the opening ceremony at blustery Lake Ella the other morning, but it was a wonderful event. The games start on March second and run through March twelfth, and all of the information is in the flyer, or you can go to talgov dot com for additional information and to register. And I understand, I was sent some information. We had a young lady, I think from Tallahassee. Is there anyone here from Parks and Rec? I was told the other morning that we had someone from Tallahassee who won six gold medals at the National Senior Olympics, and they were going to send me that information, and I don't know that I ever got it.
I know that Pete Cohen participated in powerlifting. I don't know what level or what he won, but I know he participated, and I know that Pete Butler, so it's the Night of the Peets, did in cycling and I believe did win a.
Repeat.
A gold medal.
Yeah.
And this would have been a repeat this year because I think he won last year.
Commissioners Zipper?
When you're done, Commissioner, I did have a comment, actually.
Oh, yeah, no, that was it. I'm, I'm, I think it's going to be phenomenal. It has been, I know the last couple of years that I've been involved, and so if anyone is interested, if you're out there and you want to be a part of the senior games, if you're fifty and above, I had to prove with my A A R P card that I was, I got carded the other morning.
Are you participating?
Well, I was going to do the fun one K walk. Commissioner Zipper, and then we'll bring this thing into.
We've, Florida League of Cities this past week, for the last couple of days, we've had more legislative action days where over two hundred elected officials from other state came up to walk the halls of the Capitol to protect home rule. It's an important effort on the part of not only our city, but also cities around the state. And I'll just give two examples. One has to do with a law making its way through the Senate, which is, and the House, which conceivably, for us, not yet, could be a real problem, but it is in other parts of state, it has to do with vacation rentals. There are vacation rentals cropping up all over the state, and the problem with them is that while you might argue that there's such a thing as property rights, but there's also property rights for the neighbor. And these vacation rentals, what's moving through the legislature would remove the ability of any municipality to in any way regulate vacation rentals. So you could have somebody buy the house next door to you and all of a sudden find out that it is being rented on a nightly basis, and there are ten cars that are parked out front, and there are thirty people that are staying in that house, and when you and I get the call, there's nothing we could do about it. Somebody might buy a house next to one of Dr. Jackson's rentals, and while he lives by the letter of the law, he could not do anything about that happening next to him. That's scary. We're also going through what happens every twenty years, the Constitutional Revision Commission, and there is a proposal that's making its way through, Proposal Ninety-five, which is even more egregious when it comes to local government. It would remove our ability to in any way regulate an entity that practices business outside the jurisdictional boundaries. So in other words, if you were a pizza shop on Gaines Street and you happen to deliver a pizza in Leon County, all of a sudden you become a business that services more than just within the jurisdictional boundaries, and we would not in any way be able to regulate that business, which would include signed ordinances and other zoning issues. It also, the flip side, if you were a construction company in Atlanta and were building something here in Tallahassee, sorry, we couldn't regulate. Fortunately, that looks like that will not pass. It's in another committee this Friday, excuse me, the same committee because it was pulled from last Friday. Those are things happening. Those are things that are going to be affecting us and other governments around the state, but more importantly, the people that are in this room that are watching on TV. I don't think any of us want cities to lose the ability to regulate based upon the needs of the local community. Our citizens need to be aware. If you have any questions, you can certainly call City Hall, talk with me, or probably any one of us, we can certainly help. It's important. Home rule needs to, needs to survive, and we need to let cities work. That's what we do.
Yeah, and I did send an email to the chairman of the committee prior to them.
Thank you.
Hearing that issue.
It's up again this Friday, send another note.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For adjourn?